There he is, on the left-hand side, man. Good-looking ginger man. Gingerbread man. Next to the black gentleman. Front of the flag, man, right where he belongs. That's because they don't have any sound. Our sound is on and engaged. We were just listening to it before. So if you're just tuning in, we're gonna be watching the MSAD 11 School Board Meeting. Guess that's the Gardner area in Maine. Schools talking about putting in gender-affirming care, right? So we don't know what's gonna happen tonight. All bets are off, man. Our TNN affiliate correspondent, The Inquirer, will be there. Don't know if he's gonna stir up anything. He's a smart guy. He knows how to play his hand. Yeah, we see you. Peek-a-boo. That's funny. He's probably nervous, man. He knows this is a throwdown. Hey, he gave us a finger. Did you see it? He goes like this, man. He goes... Like real, just real, real, like, cool. Yeah, man, we see you, buddy. We love you. Hang in there. Yeah, man, he gave us a shout-out with the index finger. No sound still. Man, this is like, I'm excited. I'm about as riled up as I was with the Tyson fight, even more, I think. Oh, no. I'm like a racehorse in the gate now. That's what I feel like. Yep, I got all my, uh... Ready. I got all that. Yep. So, yeah, so actually what you're saying then, Alvin, is you think that we're gonna get somebody up there tonight? Is gonna give us one of these sob stories, kinda like, like, like this? You think we're gonna get one of them? Yeah, I don't know. Not privy to, uh... It's off the record, guys. It's off the record. Yeah, let's get some audio there going on here, kids. Yep, I'll trust these people. Yeah, right, truth. Absolutely. Last time we had that meeting, man. It's like I said, some guy starts drawing a penis, man, in Zoom, I start cracking up. I'm like, oh, man, this is gonna be a long night. Oh, man. Nothing. Nothing, nothing, nothing. Well, I don't know, man. We sent a hell of a lot of emails, guys. I think we should give ourselves a round of applause, right, for that? Seriously. We did our best to make ourselves known that we were here and watching you. Kanga, hey, how's it going? Good to see you here. Yeah, 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 yeah. This is where it's all at, man. This is the big throw-down. This is, I, you know, Kanga, man, I tell you, I was watching that video, you know, I, it's like, you sense that the age that we are in right now. And I mean, this transgender issue right now is the tip of the spear in the battle. Okay, look what's going on in the Supreme Court, you know, Tennessee's decision. And there's a lot at stake right now. Lot at stake. So, um, man, it's just, uh... Makes hairs on my arms stand up, right? Yeah, yeah. Yep. It's like the rush, the rush you get in battle, right? Yeah. I don't know. There we go.
You ready, Carrie?
Thank you.
There we go.
Uh, before we start, I wanna thank you all for being here tonight. And I hope it's beneficial to you and that you leave here knowing more than when you arrived. What the school board is considering tonight is whether or not to provide health care to students, staff, and staff through a school-based health center, and if it's feasible for us to even consider doing that. This is designed to provide care to those who are without care. This is a good, it was a good idea for our district.
Sure it is.
We have families that cannot leave work to take care of their child immediately. There is a need for phys, for physicals, for our athletes. Those appointments are very difficult to schedule. Uh, we have staff members who do not have a relationship with a primary care physician, and this would really assist them as well. We're considering whether we're able to do this through a school-based health center. No decisions have been made. The board is listening to you tonight and also listening to the concept through the presentation from the, uh, commu, uh, community-based committee. I assure you, um, no decisions have been made. For many board members, this is the first time, the first moments that they've seen it, because we were not even, some of us able to attend the public forum. So I hope that you, um, will bear with us while we work through all this information. And glad you're here. Welcome.
I'm sure they're thrilled they're here.
Beginning with our agenda, uh, we'll call to order board members.
Joanne O'Brien.
Molly Rogers.
Linda Caputo.
Sage Kellen.
Alyssa Tracy.
Becky Fless.
Tony Veat.
Megan Carlson.
Kira Blodgett.
Sean Pope.
Michelle Tucker.
Jeff Hanley.
Administrative staff.
Pat Hopkins, superintendent.
Lauren Arnold, Sheldon Pitt, Garner High School.
Angela Hardy, Director of School Health.
Sarah Bolden, Director of Special Services.
Yeah, right, they can't even use it. They know it's a blown term.
It was like the Sound of Music. So long, farewell. Thank you all. Okey-dokey. Uh, administrative staff and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, founded with liberty and justice for all.
That's kinda rings hollow, doesn't it?
Uh, let's see. We're gonna enter into our public comment portion, and I'm gonna read something that's much longer than what I said earlier. Uh, we're about to convene into public comment. State law requires a public comment item on agendas of a full meeting of the school board. We also believe it's crucial to hear from our community members about their concerns and issues and are so pleased to have this as an agenda item. Having said that, please note that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. This is because we take your concerns and questions seriously and want to have sufficient time to process and research if, issues if need be. We will, if appropriate, respond to your questions and concerns at a future meeting or have the proper staff member get back to you at the appropriate time. I also wanna point out that under state law and federal privacy laws, we are unable to entertain any comments or questions about school personnel. Particular student matters, any rumors presented as facts that compromise the privacy of others and any health or medical information protected as confidential. Please know, however, we take all concerns very seriously. On any matter of concern, we would ask for you to go through the appropriate administrative channels. Finally, we recognize that our nation right now and our community are polarized on a number of issues. With that being said, we want our school board meetings to serve as an example to our students that members of our school board and members of our community can deal with controversial issues in a civil manner and demonstrate mutual respect for one another. In that spirit...
Did somebody bring up a controversial meeting yet?
We will insist that all speakers and members of the audience maintain civility and respect for any divergent views that others possess.
Oh, my god.
We ask that speakers address their comments to the board directly rather than to the audience. Speakers may address items pertinent to tonight's meeting agenda or any topic related to the school units, programs, policies, or operations. Let me be clear, any statement made that includes personally identifiable comments about a student will not be permitted. In the unlikely event the meeting becomes unruly, the board will recess the meeting and return once order has been restored.
Why would it become unruly, guys?
Finally, I want to remind everyone that you may submit written comments to the board in lieu of speaking during the public comment period if you so choose.
Not a word of the gender stuff, but yet it's gonna be controversial.
Pamphlets here, that, okay. Um, there's a board pamphlet that I have no idea if there were enough for everyone, but we do have a board pamphlet that... How much, thank you, Carrie, that outlines how we do it. Um, and individuals who wish to speak are required to fill the sign, fill out the sign-in form which I have here. Those who wish to speak will be required to state their name and the town or city of residence before beginning your comments. Consistent with policy BEDH, the board will hear public comments from residents and employees of the school unit first. If there is time remaining in the public comment period, once all residents have had the opportunity to speak, the board will permit comments from non-residents. The board will not, and we took a minute um, to get started.
Sorry.
So we have decided that we will go for ninety seconds per person and go for thirty minutes. Typically, uh, we're, our policy says twenty minutes, two minutes, twenty minutes, two minutes each. And we wanna hear. So I, I don't, we also have a full agenda of, of business that we have to do tonight. So that's the compromise that we have arrived at at this moment.
Yes, they've...
And I suppose, I suppose I'm speaking now from my own hip. And if we get to thirty minutes and we really do have an abundance of people that have not been heard, we can revisit that and see if we need to go another ten minutes or what. But we need to do, as an, as an early-on accommodation, that's what we'd like to do. So we will now entertain public comment and...
Madam Chair, you said ninety seconds?
Ninety seconds.
Got it.
Are you the timer?
Yes, ma'am.
I just love when you're the timer.
Thirty, sure.
Yep. So we'll say when you're at thirty seconds and make your alarm loud.
It is. I changed it.
Thank you. Like a fire engine or something. I don't know. Um, okay.
You guys wanna watch both panels or just the one?
James Pease.
I'll start the timer after you say your name and where you're from, okay?
My name is James Pease. I live in Gardner. And I have been in the mental health field for twenty years. I've been a clinical social worker for the last ten years. I'm currently a clinical social worker at Gardner Area High School. And over the course of my career, I have learned, as I think we all are aware, that a person's physical needs need to be met before they're going to be able to move on and do anything else. Maslow's hierarchy of needs, first one, physiological needs, it goes up to love, self-esteem. Physiological needs have to be met. If those are not met, students will not be able to access their education. They cannot get that fully if their physical needs are not met. The school-based health center is a great opportunity to ensure that those students who might not have access to health care will be able to have their health needs met, to be able to more fully participate in their education. We essentially are doing them a disservice if we don't give them this opportunity.
Yeah, you're a racist if you don't think so.
They need to have access to the health care so they can fully participate in their curriculum. And really, that's, I'm not just saying my opinion, I'm not just saying my experience based on twenty years, although that is the case. These are facts. And we don't have to agree with facts, we don't have to like facts, but they are the facts.
They're not facts.
I'm not saying my opinion. This is how it is. They need access to health care so they can fully access their curriculum. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lisa Munsing.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Munsing. I'm from West Gardner. Um, as a parent of students in MSAD 11 and as a clinical social worker, I'm ready to emphasize the importance of establishing a school-based clinic here in our district. A school-based clinic, um, is vital, is a vital resource that provides accessible medical, dental, and mental health um, services directly on school grounds. This accessibility ensures that students can receive timely care without barriers of transportation, missed classes, or parents scheduling challenges.
Or parent permission.
They're all common, these are common and realistic challenges that students and families happen, that we see in MSAD 11. Imagine getting a notice from your child's coach that you need a physical in order to play in the upcoming season.
Imagine it.
But that you don't have a PCP, or you don't have the upfront costs to have it done at a place like Express Care. But as a parent, you know that it is a lifeline to keep their grades up, their mental health. Um, and it's a part of how they become an active member in their community, in their school community. When we think about increased access to care, many students face barriers to accessing health care, including lack of insurance, transportation issues, long wait lists, lack of available appointments, financial constraints.
Red herrings.
That's it.
And there was nothing personal there, Lisa. Uh, Patrick Munsing.
My name is Patrick Munsing, and I live in West Gardner. Um, some of you may recognize me as a football coach. I'm also a twenty-year state trooper and also volunteered as a softball coach. So I have some insight into some of this. And to kinda piggyback off of what has already been mentioned, uh, personally, for me, as a coach with some of our athletes that we've had, taking them to Express Care, having to be on the phone with their parents um, to sign them up to do this kinda thing. With a school-based health care, we could have them just go right in, get that stuff taken care of, which would be fantastic. After school, trying to get them to appointments, the number of practices that they miss, they fall behind, just simple things where they're sick or they might have like a rash or some of these things. And, and what gets kinda lost in the shuffle is our trainer gets so inundated with just simple things that could just be evaluated in a school-based health care system. Personally, I have a, a son that's a junior. I have a daughter that's in eighth grade.
Thirty seconds.
And we, as a family, have these kinda conversations about their health care. I'm looking forward to the information that comes out of this meeting. But that's part of what we do as parents, and they're being able to have that access if they needed it. That would be great. If they don't, that's fine. We can see our stuff elsewhere. But thank you.
Victoria Tracy.
Good evening. My name is Victoria Tracy. I'm a resident of Randolph and currently a student at Gardner Area High School. Recently, tensions have been high between board members, administration, the community, and even students after seeing the decisions made by some of the elected members I see sitting in front of me. As you all know, today is the day board members will vote for or against a school-based health center. I speak to my community, my peers, and especially the people sitting in front of me when I say that this is needed in our community. After attending both the committee meeting and the public presentation, my heart would sink to find out that those, that, to some, that some of those that I speak to now want to deny a basic right to a community in need. Students are seeing the division both within and outside of this room, and personally speaking, it frightens me. The negativity being spread saddens me as the world is at a time of need. To those I see here today who feel the need to speak against the board members' negativity online, remember that they are humans, and you are too, and actions have consequences. I stand here today as a student who is trying to show the community that I will not be silenced, no matter how hard some of those I see here today may try. To those, to the strong individuals who have been doing nothing but put forth the best for the students of MSAD 11, you are appreciated and not going unnoticed. Thank you.
We're doomed.
Thank you.
We're doomed.
Sarah.
Yeah, who's picking the speakers, man? They are. The board did.
My name is Sarah Manzer, and I'm a resident of Gardner and a student at Gardner Area High School. I am here today to voice my support for the school health center. We live in a harsh world where health care is extremely costly. While I personally do have access to health care outside of school, many of my peers do not. I find that some people tend to instill fear in parents in order to enforce their agenda, and I do not think this is right. The health center is not a scary place. It is a place where students such as myself can get access to health care that many of my peers cannot otherwise afford. Athletes can get physicals, and students will have access to vaccines that fight fatal diseases.
Oh, good.
All of this, of course, with parental permission.
Oh, of course.
Mental health is such a prominent issue in high schools globally, and having a center where students can receive the help they desperately need is vital for our school. Our school nurse does all she can to help our school, and we are so grateful to have her. However, with a school of over six hundred students, she desperately needs assistance.
I had twelve hundred in my high school class.
The health center would be able to give her this assistance so that every student can be cared for. I'm so grateful that I have access to health care outside of school. I understand that having health care is a privilege. It shouldn't have to be. Thank you for your time.
Oh, my god.
Carrie Arsenal.
I'm gonna vouch.
Hello, I'm Carrie Arsenal. I'm a resident of Gardner. I have two sons who attended Gardner schools, and they're now in college, and I'm also a member of the Gardner Area Five Coalition. So as part of that coalition, on October twenty-ninth, we held an open forum to answer any and all questions about the proposed school-based health center. It was communicated while in advance through the high school's social media pages, emails to parents, and many other places. There was a full room at Johnson Hall to show that it was communicated. And lots of great discussion from those that were for it and not for it. The local paper covered it, a news station covered it, and I felt positive when I left that the panel of health professionals that were there had the experience through twenty-seven other, um, school-based health centers that are being run across the state to give us an accurate description of what to expect if the proposed school-based health center were to be approved. For our students who have no transportation to, you know, access to necessary health care, this will be an amazing resource for them.
Yeah, how about just a van?
I have no doubt that the medical professionals through Health Reach will provide services to students together with informed parents.
Thirty seconds.
Uh, for me, when my children were in high school, um, they played sports. They had to get their sports physicals, and they had many friends who did not have them in time to participate in sports.
Oh, sure.
Also, my oldest repeatedly dislocated his shoulder, and it would have been a lot more convenient for him to have it put back into place right there at school versus having to take him to an emergency room. So those are my points tonight. Thank you for listening. Carrie Arsenal.
Carrie, I have one of those, too.
Oh, yeah.
He had to raise his wings all the time.
Yeah.
Uh, let's see, Jamie Rigan.
Hi, my name is Jamie Rigan. I'm a resident of Randolph. I am also, um, the school nurse at Fitzpatrick Consolidated School.
Oh, my god.
As a parent, a nurse, and a resident of this community, I strongly support the establishment of a school-based health center at Gardner High School.
Federal money, looking new.
This initiative is a thoughtful, practical solution to the growing need for accessible health care for our students. It will provide students with the immediate care during the school day, reduce the burden on parents for minor illnesses, and address health concerns that may otherwise go unaddressed.
Such as?
As a parent, my primary concern is the health and well-being of my kids. I want them to have access to medical care when they need it without the disruption of leaving school or work for a minor doctor's appointment.
Convenience.
The school-based health, school-based health clinic is designed to be an additional resources for families, not a replacement for phys, family physicians or the essential role parents play in medical decisions.
Oh, sure.
As a nurse, I understand how important it is for students to have timely access to health care. Minor illnesses, injuries, mental health concerns, um, can all interfere with a student's ability to learn and engage in school. It's well documented that access to health care improves academic performance and overall well-being.
See, access to health care, they make health care abortion, okay? Access to health care is crap.
And health screenings, which can help our children, um, healthy, um, to keep them healthy and reduce health care costs for families in the community. And as a resident, I recognize that the resources and investment...
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you. Right. Carrie Manson.
Yeah, they haven't mentioned any of the HRT, chemical castration, none of that stuff.
Hi, I'm Carrie Manzer. I reside in Gardner. I am the parent of a graduate of Gardner High School and two students currently at Gardner High School. Um, I had the privilege of being part of this conversation about the school-based health center as the idea was just emerging. And, um, it was based on the model of so many other schools in our state that have been benefiting from these health centers for years.
Really?
And that conversation included parents, teachers, administrators, school nurses, community members, and local health care providers.
Alvin, are there any more in this state? I thought this was the first, man.
The enthusiasm and advocacy for a health center at the high school came from a place of deep care and deep concern for the students in our school and for their families. Many of the people who were part of the conversation are the ones who spend day after day in our schools and are a witness to the difficulties that families face in getting access to physical care and mental health care for their kids. And the negative impact that, that it has on the kids they see firsthand. Um, we should trust their concern and trust that they want what is best for all of our kids.
Thirty seconds.
The conversation was never about getting around the rights of parents. It has always been about helping kids and helping families thrive. So I urge our school board to vote in favor of this health center, as many local voices have implored you to do. Thank you.
Uh, Jaclyn O'Donnell.
No.
Jaclyn O'Donnell, Gardner resident and school nurse at the Lori Richardson School.
Oh, my god.
Um, as a parent and a nurse, I completely understand how ensuring access to our kids' health care is a paramount need. Having a school-based health center is a positive, positive and proactive step towards ensuring the well-being of all of our students. We all want what's best for our kids, and I know firsthand as a nurse that easy access to health care services has significant impact on students' overall success academically, socially, and emotionally. There are concerns circulating within our community, particularly around the idea that parents may be excluded from medical decisions regarding their children. This is simply untrue. Parent involvement is the cornerstone, not just of a school-based health center, but also what we know about pediatric medicine and children's development. Parent involvement is, is huge. Uh, there's concerns about teens seeking care without parental involvement and consent. And it's important to recognize that Maine law already allows this. It's the same as kind of that pediatrics law, Maine general, wherever your children are currently going. Once they turn sixteen, they can seek treatment for mental health services, section of reproductive health services, and substance treatment services without your permission. This is about having a conversation with your kids and your families.
Oh.
What we can do here as a community, though, is support this initiative. Please don't let blinding fear and social media pressure prevent MSAD 11 from receiving the true benefits of an initiative that's designed to improve the well-being of our students and community. It's an investment not only in the kids' future, but it's a future here at Gardner. Thank you.
Next on the list is, I'm not able to quite read it, Dan, um...
It is a sham.
Dan Glass, Dan... Oh, great. Thank you. If that's you, come to the mic. It's McGrath? Okay, I'm sorry.
They always told me I had hands scratching for writing.
Oh, boy.
It's a little better than that. She got the Dan. I did get the Dan, yeah.
I love the levity.
Basically, very quickly, I have two questions. Where does the funding come from? And if we do not participate, is there any issues with funding from other areas? That's the only two questions I have. Thank you.
Catherine Wise.
Oh, boy.
Hi, my name is Catherine Weezy.
Sorry. And... Name brutality.
I'm a Gardner student. I am a junior at a modern high school, and I'm here to support the integration of the school-based health clinic. To start, the school-based health clinic is not going to... To start, the school-based health clinic is not going to suddenly produce hundreds of
The deck is stacked, guys.
controversial things. Because that is not the goal of the clinic, let alone any healthcare place. The health clinic will give the students of our high school fair and easy access to the healthcare they need, only what they need. We all know that there, there is no agenda going in.
Yeah, well, what's your definition of need?
Will provide valuable healthcare to students who cannot access healthcare usually, especially in a tough economic time, like right now. As for the aspect of confi- confid- confidentiality being seen as a secret, keeping against parents.
She didn't write this.
This is misconstrued. As said before, the confidentiality is everyone's right to have medical privacy that can be received at any healthcare center by law. Like, minors, uh, over the age of sixteen, as Eva said. Um, the confidentiality that parents are concerned with is already an aspect in their lives at the regular physician provider. If a student's parents wish their child not to use a healthcare center because of their own beliefs, then that is a decision their family should make the use of. I, I urge you to not listen to misinformation and not listen to fear mongering and talk to the people who you are making decisions for. Um, thank you.
Wow, you're so good. So blessed. Uh, Zachary Handley.
Now, I'm gonna pass for no, thank you.
Uh, Liam Shaw.
Good evening. My name is Liam Shaw. I reside in Gardner. Um, I've been a resident here for twenty-two years. I'm the father of two daughters, one who's graduated and one who's a senior in high school. I've also been a licensed clinical sociologist for twenty-eight years, focusing primarily on children.
Eat it.
In my current role, I oversee the admin and Irving Pediatric Center at Maine General. Um, one of the things we talk about a lot in healthcare is access. And we, basically, we acknowledge you can have the most amazing doctors, the most amazing treatments. If you can't get the patients to them, there, it's really no value. One of the other things we talk a lot about in healthcare is evidence. We want to provide things that are based on facts and research and evidence. I did a full analysis of school-based mental health, uh, school-based healthcare studies. Uh, I provided two of the articles to this board. Uh, overwhelmingly, uh, the evidence supports that it improves attendance and grades and overall.
They're retreating. That's a good thought.
So in closing, I just want to say, I think we have a real opportunity here in Gardner to provide something for kids that will improve their lives and base them more productive.
And they're afraid to say the words.
Consider that, uh, voting to approve it, and I want to thank the board for
They're just obviously.
Giving us the opportunity to have this public call. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Wow.
Sarah Hubert.
Hi, I'm Sarah Hubert. I'm a lifelong resident of Pittston. Um, and I'm also a graduate of Gardner High School. I have a son who attends the middle school and a son who graduated a few years ago. Um, I'm also the principal of West Cassett Middle High School, and last year we had the same kind of thing, except a little smaller because we're a little smaller down there, uh, but to start a school-based health center, which we started in September.
Nurses and let the people say shit.
Students being able to access, uh, needs, uh, related to their mental health and as well as their physical wellness.
This should have been dealt with before, in the last meeting.
And the process to make that go well, it was pretty smooth, and I'm assured that that's probably gonna happen here. Um, schools are to be welcoming and they show that they care about every student. And I think everyone in this room would agree with that. And every student brings differences, their learning differences, their athletics, their beliefs, their personalities, their interests, their needs, just like all of us in this room.
Big language.
Um, it's a time that we have a resource in our schools that will improve the health and well-being of our students. Um, in the nineties, we talked about having a school-based health center. And so I think it's time that we have this resource, uh, for all of our students. And I'll comment everything that everything's been said tonight.
Thank you, Sarah. Frida.
It's distortion. They're distorting reality.
Hi, I'm Frida Peter. I'm a resident of Gardner. Um, I found myself sucked into wild social media posts originating from our own board members over the last couple of weeks. The posts seem less about informing the public and more about dividing our communities. I found myself in a state of disbelief and ultimately was incredibly disappointed. We're a community that rallies around our own. We have social media pages dedicated to helping those in need and providing resources in the hopes that everyone can move beyond merely surviving and into thriving. The job of the school board is to ensure the well-being of every single student in MSAD eleven. This quote is from one of our own school board members' campaigns this year, which I absolutely loved. I'll prioritize supporting students and families in Gardner to ensure the resources to thrive. The first step in this is ensuring that we are here to listen, to learn, and are open-minded. If we come in with a set agenda, making statements about being our mission to guarantee the health center doesn't get it approved before we've even learned about the good it would do for so many of our students, we're already not doing the best thing for them. The biggest arguments against the health center can be lumped in two categories. The first, arguments against confidential medical care. It's not a school board or health center thing. It's a law. You're in the wrong place if that's what you're arguing here.
Thirty seconds.
The second, lack of transparency. As we've already said, October twenty-ninth, you had that opportunity, and if you chose to not be informed, that was a choice you made. A school-based health center would provide MSAD eleven students access to the necessary healthcare that will set them up for success. Many individuals have talked about how wonderful it's been in their school, and I can't wait to see it here. It seems clear that a vote against a school-based health center is a vote against providing necessary resources students need to thrive.
Thank you, Frida. Oh. Olivencia. I hope I didn't ruin your name.
Nope, you're all right.
Yeah, abortion is women's healthcare, too.
Hi there, my name is Olivencia. I'm a resident of Gardner and business owner here. I have a child who graduated from Gardner a few years ago and a granddaughter who's currently at the high school. You all have the opportunity to make their lives better. Not every child's socioeconomic situation is the same. You have the opportunity to level that playing field for all of them. There are currently over nineteen hundred clinics around the U.S. We're not reinventing the wheel here. This isn't complicated. Just vote yes and make their lives easier.
Yeah, just.
Not every child has access to convenient, simple healthcare. And I see it in my shop. I have teenagers that come in that are pregnant and scared, and I, they sit over in a corner and they talk, and I give them a safe place to come.
Oh.
Because they don't have it at the school. They have it in my place. And we support them.
Truth starts to come out.
And we offer LGBTQ opportunities in my space as well. And they should have that at school.
Oh.
They should be able to walk in and feel comfortable with their friends and talk to people in confidence.
What is she talking about?
That's all.
What, what is she talking about? We're talking about a healthcare clinic. What the hell is she talking about?
John Kelly.
I guess, uh, my biggest concern would be that there's gonna be prescriptions given to kids without parental knowledge and
Oh, thank God.
possibly drug interactions that aren't, you know, in the paperwork that the school has. Um, and I just think that, you know, maybe we could just make an addendum to the school policy that overrides um, the state law. I don't see why that would be an issue. Um, whereas if there was gonna be any prescriptions given to children, um, they would first have to be okayed by the parents. Other than that, I think it's a great idea to have this. I just think there needs to be additional precautions in place. Because it's also, uh, some of the research I did online today says that one of the biggest things kids are doing that, in areas that have this, is they go in, they say they have ADHD or they
Aw, dude, this guy did, yeah.
Whatever, maybe they do. They get the prescriptions and then they go and sell it to all their friends.
Son of a bitch.
Because it's a stimulant.
Thirty seconds.
I don't want, I don't, I wouldn't want anybody's kids to be, you know, I don't want this to turn into something that's gonna hurt the school or the children there. I think that, you know, parents would feel a lot more relieved if we could add something to this that would ensure that this type of thing isn't gonna happen, that there wouldn't be any, um, basically just any prescriptions given to kids. I just think that's
Yeah, non-zero Zed.
Could cause more damage than good.
Thank you.
Oh.
I need a coconut. Ramsey Tripp. Oh, I'm sorry, Christina Hobbs. Ramsey, I'm so big for her. Sorry. I jumped the list.
The list.
Hi, I'm Christina Hobbs from West Gardner. I'm calling, um, coming here saying I like the idea of a health center. I understand it eliminates a lot of the red flags and everything, but there's also tons of consequences that need to be thought about. I worked in the nursing for twenty-one years. With adults, I saw common interactions and issues that came up and a lot of them were counseled on their medications. But when we have kids that don't understand, are just given a medication and just take it because they, that's what they're supposed to be taking, um, there can be a lot more issues because you don't know if a medic, an OTC med will interact with it. They don't tell mom and dad they're taking a med.
Yep.
Then we give Mibiprofen for a headache and it interacts with their med. There's other issues with, um, like, um, sorry, nervous. I, I heard a lot of people saying, if you don't want your kid to go, then tell him not to go.
Thirty seconds.
If you don't, um, if you ever thought would like to be a teen. I remember, I had great parents, and yet I went speeding down the highway and crashed my car.
Oh, my God.
Because I wanted to impress my friends. And there's the issue with, um, peers. Going as groups down, let's get birth control and peer pressure to get it. There's all these types of issues that are, um, that need to be thought about. What about summers? If they stop taking an SSRI because they can't get to the school to get another fill of it? What happens then with SSRIs? You can't stop them. There's.
Thank you, Christina. Thank you, Christina. Ramsey.
People do.
Um, Ramsey Tripp from Gardner.
People follow authority. You put a white coat on.
I'm a filmmaker and I've been on the Gardner Area Fives Coalition as well, um.
Filming.
So I'm kind of the odd man out there a little bit just because I have some questions. I think this could be a good idea, but I do have some questions. I have some things that have come up with that.
Get to it, get to it.
And a lot of it has to do with finances and businesses and decisions like that. Um, I've been part of, you know, working with government contracts and things like that, and it's usually um, sort of a bid process, and I haven't seen that in this, like, why hasn't Northern Light been contacted or you know, just some of those processes that you would normally do, um, in government to
Like building a gymnasium.
People so that there's a bidding process. Um, it's interesting to me that Maine Health, one of their financial goals is to achieve twenty percent of earnings sourced from value-based arrangements and new business lines. I've heard people talk about, like, people accessing this healthcare because they don't have finances.
Hmm.
This isn't free healthcare, just so everybody knows, it's not free healthcare, so I've asked that question too. Um, because I'm friends with a lot of people on the committees that put this together. Um, they've been great and answering a lot of my questions. Everybody's been really helpful, so it's not like anybody's like, you know, being trying to hide anything or anything like that. People have been super helpful. Um, and then I just had this concern with the fifteen thousand dollar, um, gift that was awarded to the school this summer. That, to me, seems really odd that Maine Health gave Gardner Area High School fifteen thousand dollars prior to this coming about. There's just some, you know, some ethical concerns there on my part, um, that I have. There's a few others too, just sick kids coming to school when we have MSAD eleven has on their website not to bring sick kids to school, and we don't bring all the sick kids to school. So there's a few things I think we can deal with, but those are just my concerns.
This guy has no testicles at all. None, zero Zed.
So, yep, we have one more person, um, that we, and we're at thirty minutes, so, um.
There you go. That's it.
Ben Batchelder.
Yeah, might as well close her with a, somebody who supports it. What do you think? What do you say? Oh, this guy.
Uh, my name is Ben Batchelder and I work for the district, the high school. Um, I'm here to unequivocally support adding a health center to Gardner High School.
Fuck you.
Uh, young people do have the right and the freedom to care for themselves.
You know, I'm telling you, man, uh, this is like, who even needs to listen to this joker?
Center at Gardner High School is so important. It shows that every student, no matter their background or circumstances or financial situation, has access to the care that they need when they need it.
This guy is the definition of a cuck.
Saying of, uh, my mother is that if you don't have your help, um, then you don't have anything. And I am from a support that the percentage of undiagnosed childhood ailments
He's a mama's boy.
Uh, is around twenty percent, uh, in undeveloped communities possibly higher. Uh, that's one in five kids. Um, now, everyone, first, every person here can think of someone that they knew that didn't get medical help when they needed it.
Oh, my Lord.
And everyone, I think, could probably remember the consequences as well.
Come now, just get it over with.
The consequences, of course, don't just stay in one place, you know? They don't just stay at the high school. We've all noticed how bad walking pneumonia is this, uh, these past few months. Um, you know, a quick diagnosis in a health center can prevent its spread, save money for a family, and lessen the recovery of a sick child.
Twenty-second.
It's clear, crystal clear, the health center at the high school is in the best interest of the students' community. It's also clearly in the best interest of the adults, parents, and teachers. Everyone will benefit.
Everyone will benefit.
So I understand that today is not the world that we grew up in. Uh, there's a lot of confusing and contradictory information out there.
Oh.
But I'd like to think that everyone here are friends and neighbors and people who care about this place.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's thirty minutes and
That's it.
We got through most everyone.
I'd like to make a motion to send that out, fine.
Yeah, do it, Sean.
How many folks do we have, madam? We have that have not spoken. Six.
Well, let them speak, goddammit.
All those a favor? Okay. So next then is Pat Sauce here.
Good. We're gonna listen to them all. And I hope Richard's there.
Oh, we're on TV. We're on TV out there?
We got a laptop out there.
How do we look? Makeup check. Okay.
All right, so my name is Patrick Sauce here. I'm a resident of Augusta, but I have two children that go to school in this district. Um, I was a school board member from March of twenty twenty, uh, until January twenty-two, when I was forced to leave a community I was representing, and that's where I'm in the situation I'm in now. So anyways, there's a lot of things that I've heard, um, over the years. I coach youth sports and there's a lot of parents that come to talk to me through the years about the school and stuff like that. And I know that there is two sides to this. There's people that want this clinic, there's people that are against it or actually just have concerns. Problem that we have is if individuals take and that want this, force through and don't listen to the concerns of the other side, the kids are gonna be the ones that are not losing the end. Those individuals that don't want it and they plow through and they stop this from happening, the kids are gonna lose. The only option that we have as a community is to band together.
Oh.
Thirty seconds.
Wrong, no BD here. None.
One of the things that I think the board should do is table this whole situation for a later date. Have a conversation with the parents and the community in a neutral environment. So that way there, we can come on the same page and work together for the children. I think that's gonna be the best thing. United we stand, divided we fall, as a saying, but if you apply that to a school board, united we stand, divided the children fail. So, thank you very much for your.
All right, man. If they would do that and open it up and we'd have a lot more people.
Deandra Staples.
She didn't sign up to talk.
Oh, she did. Yeah, she's on the list. She didn't need to.
No, they don't.
Her hand got away from her.
She's going to speak right now.
Okay, um.
They know better than the parents.
Keeney Anna Tinkum.
They're arrogant pieces of shit.
What's your name?
No.
Oh, perfect. Hate to do that.
I just wanna smack them.
No, thank you. Um, my name is Keeney Tinkum and I live in Manchester and I have been a community advisory board member for the Miranda School-Based Health Center for close to thirty years. Um, I'm really proud of our school-based health center, um, and all that it has done to serve our children, our educators, um, our staff at the school-based health center within the district, and also our families, um, and our community at large. In addition, I have been serving children and, um, families in my forty-year career as a registered nurse. And I want to say that school-based health center.
Lady anywhere near my children.
Just
Nowhere near my children.
Create an environment where it's safe and welcoming for all people to access care at school. Um, as a parent, I walked twenty-four miles from our school. And our children's pediatrician was twenty-two miles from school. So if I received a call during the day for my child to go to, um, for care,
Safe and welcoming means gay-friendly.
The whole day transporting my student, my child.
You get that, right?
School and never maybe return, miss sports, miss tests. So again, access, um, care at school is just critical. And it was in partnership with me as a parent. I did get calls. I mean, my pediatrician would get order, you know, communication about what was going on with my son's chronic ear problems and asthma. And it, it was a team. We were working together. And I know not all children have that, but the center is really there to support students and family and improve um, communication, and it makes them a better advocate as an adult for their own health.
That's language.
Thank you very much.
That's a red flag language right there.
Alan Sarvenus.
Damn commies. Oh, Amber. Oh, Amber, it's.
Good evening, uh, Chairwoman Flesh. My name is Alan Sarvenus. I live in Topsum. I also represent parents' rights in education here in Maine. Uh, for the last five years, I've dedicated myself and others to working with school boards, school board members, superintendents. I've had a superintendent call me at six o'clock on a Friday night to vent about his district. Okay, so there is a way to get along and there is a way to listen. In the last five years, I have not seen the public process thrown out the window like just happened here. And that's why we're upset because it's disrespectful. There's no process, there's no policy, there's no contract. And considering there's a lawsuit in Fairfield right here in Maine because they didn't tell fans they were sending a little girl home with a clear cla- plastic baggie with drugs in it.
Yes.
The ones you put sandwiches in usually. This one had drugs in it in a bookbag that the father found.
Yeah, yeah.
So yes, there's a concern with people in the district that the public process would allow you to ease their feelings. But instead you said, no, Wednesday before Thanksgiving, let's throw this agenda out there.
Yep.
Maybe we'll get an improvement.
Thirty seconds.
I guess that's what it is. I mean, you told me I've never seen it. And if anybody doesn't have time to speak, I printed these out so you can write on it and hand in your testimony since I knew they were gonna cap. But you didn't, so thank you. Um, but that's it. I mean, where's the public process to let people participate?
Parents have lives. The process is supposed to be slow.
Yes, deliberately.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yay. All right. Whoops.
Yeah.
I'm Mike Sobuleski.
Mike Sobuleski. Get him tiger.
Representative Mike Sobuleski. I'm here to request of parents who are concerned that this will not be as benign as it's being made out to be. The district already has a transgender and gender expansive po- student policy that forces girls to share toilets and locker facilities with boys pretending to be girls.
Yes, yes.
Is it any one of the fifty-one percent of the two thousand six student visits to Maine school-based clinics were from mental health issues last year alone?
Yes.
When Maine government-run K through twelve schools immerse minors in trans madness, we should not be surprised. So many kids are anxious, depressed and suicidal.
Thank God.
Will the health clinic at the high school dish out hormone therapy and medications to children without the knowledge and consent of parents or guardians? And, uh, who knows how far you would go with that? State law does say that you can dispense medication. It doesn't say you have to. So are you prepared to go past what's parents want, the rights of the parents?
Hmm.
I forward requested the financials, as you know, Madam Superintendent, and I've forward requested, requested all of the documents, including all of your contracts.
Yes.
So we're gonna keep a very close eye on this to find out how far you're gonna be willing to go with this. You've gone woke in your other policies way to the left. And there's nothing that makes me believe that you're not gonna do that with this one and push it just as far as you possibly can.
Yes.
To take over the parental rights and take control of these children, which I think is shameful. So we're gonna be watching very closely.
Oh, hell yeah.
And hold you accountable and we'll be here when the vote comes.
Man, thank God. Yeah, we got him.
Jengris.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm happy to be here. Um, my name is, uh, Lori Jengris. I'm a teacher at Gardner area high school.
Oh.
Uh, I've been teaching for twenty years.
Oh.
Two sons. Um, one is, uh, currently a junior at U M F.
Uh huh.
And I have another son who's here in the audience who's a junior at high school. I spent the first seven years of my career as a special educator.
Oh.
And I'm now in my thirteenth year of teaching English.
I see.
Cultivating lifelong learners is my jam.
Oh.
However, I believe that cultivating lifelong healthy behaviors is just as important. So I am here to urge you, school board, to make the common sense decision of approving a student-based health center for our school district. I can't tell you how many times I have told six, sick students to go see Nurse Nora. And they have replied, Ms. Jengris, I can't go home. My parents are at work. Or if their grandparents are raising them.
Go see the nurse.
My nana and grandpa can't come get me. Of course, I send them anyway, but as a parent, I can empathize with this kind of predicament.
Oh, no.
And, uh, Mr. P is already, um, spoke about Maslow and the hierarchy of needs and I, but I can assure you that it is true that children are not learning if they are sick. They cannot do it. Um, it, it's.
Thank you very much.
Oh, my Lord.
So that, um, concludes our list. I want to thank all of you that have come for public comment. We welcome you to stay as we continue through the agenda. So we will pick up, uh, the agenda at reviewing, uh, approval of agenda minutes, prioritization of items and alteration of the established agenda format sequence as needed. Motion to approve?
Um, no, I need to make a couple of adjustments.
Oh, I'm sorry. Approval, uh, I thought you said there were no adjustments.
No, there are two adjustments.
Oh, okay.
Um, on page two, under general information, D.
Can you say that loud, please?
Sorry?
Can you speak up, please?
Yes, there's a lot of background noise here.
Guys, I got a little nauseous during that.
Um, under general information on page two, D, Aaron Soul. Um, listed that individual as being an employee, um, that should be crossed out, please.
So.
And then I would make the recommendation.
Are they gonna try and vote on this tonight?
The discussion regarding health clinic.
Cause it's later.
High school be moved.
Like at the end.
To prior to recognition and celebration, um, in recognition of how many people are here this evening. Um, to give them the opportunity to hear the conversation without having to sit through the rest of the board's agenda.
Yes, Alvin. Yeah.
Motion to approve those.
They don't feel safe.
I just wanted to say something about last week's meeting.
They need a welcoming clinic, something.
Place, let me know. Different place.
As they run in fear from their Neandertal parents.
Okay. Second, by Linda?
Yep.
Um, okay. All those in favor? Motion carries. Or was there any dissent?
Well, Sean did exactly what he said he did. He, he made a motion to let the rest of the people speak and he did what he said. He was, he's a man of his word.
Make a motion?
Okay.
I'd like to, uh, on page two under the section ten, the Roman numeral tens, I N A. I would like to remove the word approve from that, approval from that discussion. I would like to have the information presented to us as it has been planned to do. But I would prefer that we not take a vote tonight to approve or disapprove of it. The, and, uh, I'd like to, I've made that motion and I'll wait for a second and then I'll, I'd like to speak to it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to remove the word approval?
Remove the action of approval. And, and this, tonight's discussion on that issue. We, we're gonna have a presentation, which I would love to hear.
Yep.
But I would prefer, and the motion is that we will not take a vote to approve it at all. We will wait.
Okay, so we have a motion and two seconds. Um.
I would like to speak also to my motion.
Right now?
If, if that's available.
Sure.
In view of, I mean, all of us on the school board have received, uh, I mean, I'm buried in emails. And it's obvious that this is not a, a, a complete sell to everyone. Uh, you have a great group of people that are for it, but obviously a great group, a group of people that are not for it, don't fully understand it. And I think, you know, delaying this another month or even two months is not gonna hurt anything at all. Get some more discussion out there. Let's hear the presentation tonight and, and get all, you know, that, that I do want to hear. I think it would be in the best interest of selling the product to, so to speak, to wait and not drive, uh, drive it through tonight. This is a little faster than it should be.
Yes.
And I think it would be in our best interest if you want it to work, to give it a little more time.
He's, he's proposing delaying it.
Sure.
Yes.
Um.
That guy, that guy on the left, the old guy.
As we're going into flu season, the longer we're gonna have to wait for children to have access to care.
Oh, here we go.
Time. No, it won't happen immediately. It'll be a, I mean, it.
This, yeah, what are you gonna set this clinic up in like overnight?
To take effect in twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yeah, twenty-five, twenty-six, stupid woman.
True. So.
Oh, my God. That's on the school board, guys.
Tonight, uh, to pursue the approval. And so I wouldn't support that, that motion, uh, to amend the, uh, the agenda like that. I went to the meeting, uh, back at the end of, uh, back of.
Oh, he wants to push it through.
Well advertised and I think well attended, uh, and had a lot of information.
Mister.
Several of us there.
Mister No School.
And there's also been other information about this coming out. So this isn't necessarily a surprise to me. I think it's been well advertised and well promoted. I've heard a really, um, um, well, we've heard a lot of views and I.
You think we're ready to go.
Uh, and will have even more information to make that decision on tonight.
You didn't answer anything. You didn't take, answer the questions.
That's all I would, uh, not, uh, adjust, um, the phrasing of that.
Who's, who's purse up there has balls in?
Okay. You've already spoken, Jeff, so I'm gonna go over here to Molly.
Which one of them women has his testicles? In her purse. You tell me.
Address the fact that there was a presentation at Johnson Hall. But it was explicitly advertised as not an M S A D eleven event. So therefore, this has not been brought to the school board. This has not been brought to the community.
Yes.
So yes, it was a, it was a very thorough presentation. It was well attended. But on the Gardner area, um, high school page, on flyers that were distributed around town, on other social media, it was very much distinguished as not an M S A D eleven event.
We're watching you ladies.
I would be very comfortable in not doing that approval tonight. Um, there are a lot of issues at stake.
Yes.
And a lot of information that needs to be ironed out before we, we make this step.
Yes.
I, I hear the passion on both sides. I recognize the, the need for healthcare. Um, I do, I did read that this would not be implemented until the fall. Um, so there is time.
Yeah, exactly, Katie.
Get the community together and talking about it with transparency, with contracts, with information.
Yes, yes.
And we don't have that for our community tonight.
We don't and we don't.
Should not take a vote on this.
That is correct, correct, correct.
Mary?
My comment, or exactly what she just said. We have no proposals in front of us. We've had no board meeting about this. There was a marketing presentation given to us by a third party profit company, company that is for profit. Given to us, so it was nothing more than a, a marketing campaign and a stunt.
They're actually a nonprofit. I want to be careful. I want to be careful because we haven't, we have not shown caution when we've talked about this, especially on social media. And I'm gonna stop there with that.
So the flyer that I seen said that they built, they have a sliding scale.
So you need to hear the presentat- I don't want to cut you off, but you're not.
Yeah, but you're cutting him off, you bitch.
You're not giving an opportunity for the people that are here to present and accusations are very hurtful. Your words matter.
Who are you to cut off the black man?
So right now, we are discussing whether to support the motion that's on the.
Correct. So let's deal with that first.
I'm saying I support that motion because we have not been given any paperwork, no contracts, no proposal with ink on paper. Physically that we can read nor has anything been given to the public.
That's right. So we're not, we, we shouldn't vote on it.
So we have a motion and a second. Molly?
Can you explain to me what possible approval to host means rather than consideration to approve?
My understanding is, and I will be corrected if I'm inaccurate. My understanding is we can vote tonight. The board can, the board can decide to do what it wishes to do.
Uh huh.
Board can proceed to to.
To, to.
Start a health clinic in the fall.
Uh huh.
The board can also decide that they need more information.
Uh huh.
You guys can listen. I hope you will. Listen to the, to, um, the process and to the program that's gonna be presented to us. I haven't heard it. I wasn't able to be at it. I'm not jumping into anything. I'm trusting that we have asked competent people who have offered to do this for us. It is not an M S A D eleven sponsored event. That's accurate, Michelle. It was not. This is something that was brought to us from the outside.
Yeah.
To operate within our school. It is not ours.
Point of order.
And so.
Point of order?
The chair gets the point of order.
When I make a point of order, that's what has to be addressed.
That's not true. The chair is in charge of the meeting. So, Jeff. You need to take lead of this conversation.
Sure. So, I would like to let Molly finish, if that's okay.
No, it isn't. I've made a point of order and under the rules.
Yes.
You have to address that point.
Okay, what's your point of order, Jeff?
Point is that you, you are facilitating the meeting. You're the chairwoman of the meeting. You're not supposed to pontificate. You're supposed to call on others and allow them to speak. You're speaking and not allowing other members waiting to speak and to have their say. I would ask that you would limit your conversation so that the people that are holding their hands up get to speak. That's my point. Thank you.
Good job.
Molly?
Given that it is a community proposed. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And the meeting that was held was a community proposed advertised.
Yes.
Opportunity.
Uh huh, what?
This is the first time the board is hearing the presentation. So is this a vote to approve the presentation this evening? Or is this a vote to hear and begin the process of approving a clinic?
What are our next steps? How is this?
Exactly voting for?
Yeah, what are we?
It's entirely up to the board to ultimately make that decision. You have the right to vote to move it forward. You have the right to say, not yet. We're not ready. That's why it's kind of a possible approval versus just consideration.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You have to know Robert's rules of order like this. Crazy.
This is the first time you've heard it. You may want more of a presentation. Um, you have the right to say, we're ready to move forward.
Guys, I think we made a difference.
You know what? I like this idea and concept, but in order for us to really approve, we need X, Y, Z. Um, you have the right to say, we want to table this till, um, next month. You, you, you know, it's, it's, it's.
The one who's selling the whole thing, we don't know.
Intentionally so that the board can decide what it wants to do because this is the first time.
This is fascinating.
Heard this from the public, from the community, uh, committee.
We made a difference.
Basically, at that point.
Wait. I'm sure we did.
Before you speak.
So sarcasm's gonna kick in here.
Um.
It better not, lady.
Megan had her hand.
Yeah, I was just gonna, um, let me, uh, I think that the getting hung up on possible approval to host a clinic at Gardner area high school. Um, pre- presentation is the key word here. And when I looked at the agenda thing, I saw with presentation. Whoa, we're gonna have a presentation. And then my mind was blown because we've had this non-stop conversation about a vote. And there's no word vote here.
Yes.
And there's no vote, like, I'm just kind of floored that we're still talking about a vote that's really imaginary right now. I'd love to see the presentation. I loved everything that everybody had to say. And I think that this sounds like possible approval. I mean, to me, it sounds like presentation is the agenda item.
Alvin, I think we did something here.
Should do so that we can then possibly do all of the things that Pat just mentioned or none of them. So that's just my words.
Your words. Michelle?
Yes, thank you. I, uh.
I said, Michelle.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, my God.
It seems like we're all on the same page of wanting to know more, of wanting the presentation. So what is the obstacle to removing the agenda item? Approval is a synonym for vote in this instance.
Yes, it is.
So I don't understand what the objection here is to removing the word approvals. Why don't we just remove the word approval?
Take it off.
Get all the information.
Get it out of there.
Do our students the best possible service by putting it off, by getting all the information tonight, absorbing all the things that these brave people in, in this room have testified about. I don't see the issue if we all want more information of voting against approving it tonight.
Keep going, keep going.
Yes, the reason I made this motion was because of the inbox, the flood of emails. It's obvious.
Yes.
This is, there is controversy about this. And my motion is not to, is actually to remove the possibility of a no vote or a yes vote. I'm asking for a delay, that's all. Let's give this another thirty days, another sixty days. It's not for this year's implementation anyway. It's for the next year. There's plenty of time to put it into place. That's all my motion is for, is not to kill it, is to just give it more time to breed.
More time, more time.
Linda. Oh, and then Sage. Thank you. Sage just scammed us up first. Go ahead.
Thanks. Um, so I, what I've been here.
Um, so I, what I've been hearing consistently is that you all want more information. We have a method of more information right now, and that is the presentation that we're supposed to be listening to. So I think that it would be in everybody's best interest if we address the motion on the table, figure that out, and then we listen to the presentation. Because obviously, everybody needs more information.
Thanksgiving, man.
Despite the fact that there was a forum for the public to ask any questions to be answered. October twenty ninth. Um, so yeah, I think we need to be listening to that presentation right now because these are the people that know, they know what they're doing, so.
They know what they're doing.
Linda?
Appeal to authority.
I'd like to not remove the possibility for a vote. I'd like to hear the presentation and then decide if I'm ready to vote.
No. No, no way.
Pat, when do we address this?
No, we need more, wait, more papers, more contracts. Bring that up again.
So board members, you received tonight at your spot a summary sheet. Jeff, you're the one that brought up our inbox.
Yeah.
So there were six hundred and thirty-three emails processed. Five hundred forty-two were opposed to this. There were a total of eighty-nine residents within the district that wrote emails. Eighty-nine. A total of two parents. Total of two questions. Am I reading this wrong?
Yes.
They're not well educated.
There are eighty-nine
Eighty-nine.
Parents.
Parents.
Residents.
Non-residents, staff, students.
In support.
In support.
Two parents had questions.
Two parents had questions.
And of the opposers.
Of the opposers. Five were parents.
Seven were non-parents, residents.
But residents.
Five hundred and twenty-seven had no connection to our district based on what-
None.
Not, yeah.
There you go.
Scratch those. Six days.
Our federal tax dollars.
And then I would
Alan, you are not on the board. You need to, this is not a conversation. Just ignore it. This is not.
Ignore it.
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna
I would encourage you at this point to
We're gonna move forward. So just so the board realizes and the community realizes that the bulk of the emails we've received, they don't even come from here.
And they don't have any word.
Oh, so they're gonna just
It's a form.
Cast them aside.
In fact, it was
They're called click politics or email bots. And I respect people being against it. I understand it.
Oh, no, you don't, lady.
Not my decision to make, it's the board's decision to make. So we have a motion and a second.
I, I'm gonna be your best friend, lady.
The motion as I have it is to remove the word approval from, um-
Item number ten.
Item ten A.
A.
Um, and to just make sure that no vote can be taken this evening. So instead of just to listen to the presentation.
And no vote.
No vote.
So, all those in favor of that?
Oh, my God.
This is a math equation at this point. The votes are weighted by community.
Okay, four, okay.
Uh, all those opposed to that motion?
All right, geez.
Linda, I abstained.
Okay.
And Tony?
They're gonna leave it on there.
Okay.
That's what I just saw, isn't it?
All right. Kira abstained.
Yeah, we do.
So, um, based on weighted votes, let's make sure I have this right. That comes to seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-five in support and four thousand five hundred and eight again, so it fails.
So we're voting tonight, guys.
Put them back to the agenda.
Wow.
Um, approval.
They're voting tonight.
So move. Okay, one, just
Second.
Second by Tony.
Yep.
I believe any questions or comments have been addressed at this point.
Who made the motion? And Tony's second.
Yeah, of course you do. Hey, Miss Lady in the green, who never said anything.
All those in favor?
Hey.
Opposed? Abstained?
Oh, this is pathetic.
To approve the agenda.
That lady in the green sweater carries that lady on her left with her book.
Okay, um, approval of minutes, minutes of previous meetings? Had a comment.
And we have a motion first.
We're gonna listen to the presentation and then they're gonna vote.
Moved by Tony's second.
By Molly.
Oh, thank you, Molly. Uh, questions or comments? The, um, the regular school board meeting of November sec- seventh and the special school board meeting expulsion on November twenty-first.
On a regular school board meeting. I just wanted to clarify my no vote for the Fellowship of Christian, um, Athletes Club. Um, if it had been
We ain't done with these people.
A club that
Nearly done.
Included all different kinds of believers as well as non-believers to share their
I'm taking it personal now.
Common, moral, ethical beliefs.
Call on our email campaign bots.
And to hold each other accountable. I probably would have voted yes. I was just a little bit concerned on the focus on the group not making each other accountable to living up to a moral and ethical standard. But prayer, Bible, and Christian leadership. As if only Christian leadership was important. And in follow-up comments regarding other clubs that were more inclusive, one of the board members indicated that you had to be of a certain mindset to be included in a, another group, the, um, School Gay Straight Alliance Club. And so I'm just a little bit concerned that athletes that are LGBTQ might not feel very comfortable
This is a total scandal.
Joining in that particular fellowship club. And that's why I thought it was rather exclusionary.
Exactly the way I'm gonna be.
And not an interfaith plus, uh, non-believer ethical club for leadership and keeping people accountable. And I just wanted to clarify that if it was an interfaith fellowship of athletes, I would have approved it as long as they welcome non-believers as well to share the common beliefs and morals and virtues that we all want them to have.
Course you do.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Course you want them to have their virtues.
Move on in just a second. But that's where a greater presentation would have been helpful.
Yes.
For us to, sort of like this, to have more information from that particular club. So we would know
Who is this blonde lady, man?
So Joanne, thank you. I appreciate you clarifying that for us.
I'm sorry. We did get a presentation from the Fellowship of Christian Athletes. The gentleman was very passionate in what he spoke about. He never said it was exclusionary. It was welcoming for anybody who would want to, to join that.
Yes.
So we did have a, had a group presentation. And we passed it because under civil rights laws, we are to welcome that group in as well as LGBTQ.
Yes.
So we did have an, a quick presentation on that.
I'm glad you thought that. Um, Megan?
No, that's okay.
Whoa, what kind of bitch, lack, backhanded crap was that?
Oh, Sage, please wave.
What a witch.
I just wanted to say again that, um, the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, it's already been approved. Um, and I think that we really need to be focusing on the big thing on our agenda right now.
Yeah, you think?
Thank you. Consideration.
Old pet on the pack.
Thank you, Sage.
From Pat.
All those in favor?
Oh, Lord.
Can you repeat that? Yes, to approve the agenda minutes from previous meetings.
Yes, to approve the minutes from previous meetings.
I'm sorry, minutes, yes.
Whatever, let's move on.
I left out the word minutes. All those in favor? Thank you. Gotta keep your glasses on or I'm lost. Okay, um-
These people don't understand, this is a new day and age. We ain't playing, man. We ain't the local news.
Yes, yes, I have tried it bigger and differently. Okay, now it's time for our presentation.
That I got nothing to do but sit here all fricking day long and stew about shit. Do crap about crap. Oh.
Hi, everyone.
You ain't never met a motherfucker like me.
Um, so my name's Deander Staples and I'm the Assistant Director of Operations for Health Reach Community Health Centers. Um, we are a federally qualified health center, um, and we are a nonprofit organization. So the publication that we got to be giving is actually right here tonight, so feel free to follow along. Um, the mission statement for a school-based health center, I'm just gonna kind of read through it real quick. The mission of the proposed school-based health center is to keep students healthy in school and ready to learn. Through a collaboration between Health Reach Community Health Centers and local schools, the school-based health center will provide access to comprehensive, integrated, and culturally responsive healthcare services.
Culturally responsive.
To ensure that all students have access to quality care when they need it.
Uh huh, what does that mean?
The next page is just, um, a list of all of the committee members. Uh, so this committee that you see here on this page, they are the folks that approached, um, Health Reach, uh, knowing that we have done this in the past with other, other states.
I bet you have. You little devil, you.
So again, the next page talks about what is Health Reach and who are we? I briefly said that we are federally qualified for something. We are nonprofit. Um, for those of you who may know the Richmond Family Health Center
Well, that's even better, nonprofit, yeah.
That is us. Um, a lot of you may be patients there, you know.
An NGO, basically.
Community members may be patients there. Some kids at the high school may be patients at these facilities. Um, and we provide equitable access, um, healthcare um, in vulnerable populations.
Vulnerable populations.
And, um, Central Maine happens to be one of those vulnerable. Um, we provide several services. Not only do we provide primary care services, behavioral health, we provide dental services, substance use disorder treatment, osteopathic manipulation medicine, uh, podiatry connector services to outside resources such as SNAP, transportation, main care.
That's not me, boys, girl.
And we provide care management as well. So for folks that have more chronic conditions, pretty much think about your own primary care office. That's what we are. We're just a smaller version inside a school.
PowerPoint.
So school-based health centers, it, they increase access to medical, mental health care for students. Um, just recognize that the youth in our communities, not everybody has access to healthcare. Um, even at Richmond Family Health Center, um, sometimes it may take a month or so to be able to get in to get an appointment for kids that need a sports physical in order to participate in preseason that third week of August. Um, but yeah, mom and dad, they tried. They realized maybe in July that they need to get a sports physical.
Maybe, you know.
They got on the list, but guess what? They can't get that sports physical until December. And then that kid can't play sports. So this innovation brings healthcare services to the school. Makes it more accessible for students and staff. It provides convenience for, for parents so they don't have to miss work. And lack of transportation. So a school-based health center is a partnership for the school. So it offers primary care services provided by a medical provider within, within an office setting, just inside the school.
Primary care.
The goal is to bring accessibility coupled with convenience to the students and staff like we talked about before. Appointment, appointments can be before, during, or after school. We also have twenty-four hour, um, on-call, um, service.
Right, they still dropped dead because of the COVID vaccine on the field.
Students and staff can access services regardless of their ability to pick. Um, this reduces missed class time for both students and staff. It reduces truancy and it's conveniently located. It provides all the same services that you would get with your own primary care. There's approximately thirty-nine hundred school-based health centers in forty-nine states.
Don't care.
Throughout the United States.
Don't care.
Um, there's currently twenty-seven school-based health centers in the state of Maine. Some of them that, um, more geographically located, close to you. It would be Coney, Lawrence High School, um, Morana Cook, all of the Greater Portland help, um, the Greater Portland schools, Bangor, all the Bangor, all the Brewer schools, um, Nacomis. Uh, so several, several schools that you're familiar with. So for those of you in, um, that can't see.
Oh, there's your gay flag.
So these are just some photos of inside Lawrence High School, which is where we have, um, our other school-based health center. We've been there now for four years. Um, it's been extremely successful. Um, but just to give you guys a little visual idea of what a school-based health center looks like.
Are we breaking news here?
Again, you see here a waiting area. You see a reception desk. Um, and off to the, to the left, you have an exam room, just like you would have at your own primary care office. Um, we have a full-service lab. So this is super convenient for teachers. They come and do their lab work with us throughout the day. Um, they have orders from their own doctors, or maybe we are their primary care provider. That's an option too.
Oh, no, they can make them their primary care provider.
Kids that need blood work done, full-service lab, they go out the same night. Results typically, depending on what the test is, they'll come back within
Why do you need all this to solve the sports physical problem?
Yeah.
Exactly.
So those are some more. And there's another slide.
Why do you need all of this?
Waiting area.
Look at this place.
This entire space, believe it or not, is one classroom.
I can't wait to go and micro-examine these rooms close up.
Full-service lab, a waiting area. What you didn't see is we also have a restroom and we also have a front reception area.
Oh.
So benefits, it's affordable. Um, we heard a little bit before about profit, nonprofit, we're nonprofit. We do bill, um, insurance, just like your own primary care doctor would. We bill main care, we bill medicare, um, but we also offer sliding fee. Um, a lot of hospitals in the area and, and other doctors' offices as well offer a sliding fee. Um, and we do that. Um, so it's based on income. Um, so for those of you who even have commercial insurance, you can still, um, apply for sliding fee. And that'll reduce that, um, that copayment and, and other services as well. So continuity of care. Um, we work with other primary care offices as well or specialty providers. Um, because we may not be your primary care provider. Maybe you just kind of use us as a walk-in clinic and that's okay. Or urgent care, that's okay. Um, but we do have that continuity of care with your primary care provider. Um, there's a lot of folks on the advisory committee, um, who are actually providers from Waterville Pediatrics. At Lawrence, we have, I can't even tell you how many students that we share with Waterville Pediatrics. So the collaboration effort with those providers, um, you know. Mom and dad love the convenience or guardian loves the convenience of us in the school.
They're all gonna be the ideologues. Gonna be the ideologues. Look, there's a gay flag in the damn picture.
Right now to get into Waterville Pediatrics just to have a normal appointment um, is, is, it's crazy. It's like four months right now. So um, they absolutely love the convenience of us because they can also work directly with us on the student's care. Um, and connections. So we also um, provide students and families um, with other social services in the community, such as main care SNAP, um, caseworkers, dental care, transportation. Um, we actually call them, in our work organization, we call them actors. Um, so a lot of times at the, at the school-based health center, we.
You'll just suck migrants right in through the children, by the way, and then the parents will all get, you know, signed up for everything they need to get signed up for, you know, all the benefits.
And sign up for all of these benefits that we feel like that they may um, be eligible for.
Yeah.
Um, and we bring that right to them. Um, a lot of times too, we have kids that are turning eighteen, who couch surfing, may live with grandma, dad's in jail, moms nowhere to be found. Um, our connector works a lot with those kiddos and trying to get them set up for what comes after high school.
Kiddos.
Do you have main care set up? Um, do you have other benefits? Do you have housing? Do you have transportation, that sort of thing? Um, so that's what they do. So these are some examples of what we provide, sports physicals, immunizations, great example of immunizations.
Reproductive health.
Notice went out to um, kids at the junior high and the high school, um, and to parents.
And care for acute issues.
Mandated vaccines.
Chronic conditions such as.
Attend school anymore. Their nurses were kind of panicking. They gave us that list. We called every parent. We.
They could hide this stuff in one or two of those words in there.
You can just do them right there. Like, I don't have to take time off from work. No, we'll do your immunizations right here. We brought all the immunization paperwork to the school nurse. I thought the school nurse was gonna throw herself a party because she didn't have to hunt down these kids anymore. Um, and then kids didn't miss a day. Um, and of course, they waited until that last cutoff day to do it, but we were able to.
Give away all our freedoms, right?
Uh, we did seventeen.
Convenience and safety.
Seventeen immunizations in one day to keep those kids in school. Uh, well child checks. So.
Yeah, they're gonna give them the drugs.
Even if you do have your own primary care provider, doing these well child checks is super important once a year for these kiddos.
They could give them a re- a hysterectomy under reproductive health, right? You wanna stop your reproduction.
Put it up with health, mental health services, um, acute issues. So we see a lot of this, um, especially right now. We see a lot of walking pneumonia and strep throat.
I'll try and fix that, Jeff.
Chronic conditions.
I know it pisses you off.
That have diabetes, um, or other chronic healthcare needs that, um, that we work with them. Labs, substance use.
Some sensory.
One of the great things that we do in collaboration with the school, the school has a policy that if kids are suspended for substance use, they can't come back to school.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Until they've had sort of an intervention appointment. Um, and mom or dad or a guardian has to try to be involved with that if they do have a guardian and they can't come back to school unless they have one. We had two kids last week that got suspended for five days. Today actually was the day that they were able to return back to school. But they needed that appointment quickly in order to step foot back on school. So we did one virtual appointment late yesterday with dad and kiddo. And then this morning, um, there was a two-hour delay.
What is it with the kiddo?
Thirty minutes before school started, one parent with that other kiddo was able to come, do their appointment, and they're both back in school today. Whereas otherwise, if they had to wait, or if they had no means to get to an appointment, they'd still be out of school today. So this is some data from Lawrence, just to give you an idea. Nine through twelve students, there's roughly around five seventy-seven, uh, seven to eight, there's three hundred and fifteen. So from twenty-three, uh, the school year twenty-three to twenty-four, we served a hundred and eighty-one of those students and twenty-nine staff. I will tell you, we collaborate really well with the bus garage as well. A lot of times they'll hire new bus drivers, but to get a DOT physical, um, sometimes can be a long wait.
Sorry.
Um, that's something that we do as well. We're able to get the DOT physicals done. They're in a bus tomorrow, super easy. Um, visits, so twenty-three to twenty-four, we had one thousand one hundred and eighty-one visits um, in that school year. And I will point out that less than five percent of those one hundred and eighty-one students are confidential kids. Um, that means that we work with ninety-five percent of our students. We collaborate. And work very closely with their parent, their guardian, their grandma, their aunt, their uncle, whoever it is that they live with. Um, we find that it is very successful when a child has more support. So our goal is always to get them as much support as they possibly can.
Is this affiliated with this place?
Those at school. So I can't tell you how many times a day we have meetings with the alternative education program and we sit down with a student and a teacher, um, and try to figure out certain behaviors and that sort of thing. So there's also a collaboration, what will it be, school? Connections to mental, mental health services, we had eighteen percent during that school year. Um, and connections to Health Reach Dental Services. I don't have that number, but it was a good handful, um, because we also have two dental sites. Um, we have a student advisory committee there and we have a Health Reach um, connector.
What the hell is a student advisory committee?
We also do a lot of referrals to specialty services. I'll give you an example, the other day we had a teacher come in who had a really strange sore in her mouth and the private, her mic, private, excuse me, the PCP. Um, had to refer her out to get some more urgent needs from um, ear, nose, and throat specialists because it was concerning. But if that teacher had to wait for her own primary care, which she said she tried to get into, um, and she wasn't able to get in until after the new year.
Exactly what they're doing.
We were able to get her in, same day she had the concern after she brought it to our attention. Um, and she now has a referral specialty care in an emergent service. So we currently work um, Tuesday through Friday, seven to three, but I will tell you when there is a week where maybe there is um, no students there on Friday, but teachers are there on Friday. We tend to shift our days so that we still have a presence as much as possible for those four days. Um, you know, we usually physically choose Monday because there's one Monday holidays. But we work around that schedule and we're very flexible, just to try to maintain that four-day-a-week presence as much as we possibly can. So confidential care, what is it? I know this is a hot topic. So main law, uh, law allows minors to consent with specific health services if the minor demonstrates decision-making capacity. I will tell you, we have students that start out um, needing one of these three services, mental health, reproductive health, or substance use. I'm scared to tell mom and dad that I started vaping. Our provider works very closely with that student and for a very, very short time. Once that trust is built, they're no longer a confidential student, they're no longer a confidential patient. We've contacted mom, we've contacted dad. Cause nine times out of ten, it's they're scared to tell mom and dad, but if somebody else is willing to tell mom and dad, that's okay. So. Um, the provider works very closely with them. Now, we talked about that five percent. Well, that five percent, those are students that there's other issues going on um, at home, or maybe there is no home. Um, and they're a confidential student because we don't know if there's a mom or dad. We can't get ahold of a mom or dad. Um.
What?
So, so those are the three things that we can treat for on a confidential basis. Um.
When do you not get ahold of mom and dad? What are you talking about?
Capacity. And if they don't, um, I have found on several instances that our provider will say, I'm sorry, I can't treat you for that. Because I just don't feel like you are in a position where you can make that, that decision-making capacity. So again, like I talked about, a lot of times students may start out confidential because they wanna know what we're all about. They wanna step their foot in the door. They have an issue. Maybe even it's just like, I have a really bad sore throat and the nurse can't see me. She's tied up. Well, we have to call mom and dad for that. Like, that can't be a confidential visit. But if they come in and they have a really um, concern about, this just happened last week, so a kid came in. Um, I'm spending way too much money on cigarettes. Um, and things, um, I wanna stalk, but I don't want mom and dad to know.
You gotta be kidding me.
You know, because she built that trust in a couple of visits. The provider made sure that she saw that, that kiddo every other day to keep an eye on them, to try to build that relationship. Now mom and dad know. Um, and that's super important because.
Always towards getting mom and dad to know.
Something, you can't wait. That decision is in the moment, right? And if you wait a minute, it'll probably be gone. Um, so medications, um, we had some concern about that, but medications, they're sent to the pharmacy just like, um, your primary care provider would do, right?
Right.
Um, medications are picked up by parents. Um, and sometimes we'll actually have parents say like, hey, if you're going out, can you go pick this up for me? I can't make it. We are willing to do that for parents, but parents know, know about those medications.
Of course they do.
They go through their insurance just like they would from your own pharmacist. Um, that's all transparent for parents.
She's lying.
Um.
I know she's lying.
So in terms of understanding, what is the agreement between um, the district and Health Reach? Um, keep in mind, again, the advisory committee, they approached us, um, because they heard about our success.
Keep in mind, you came to us.
We have other federally qualified health centers, like I mentioned before, across the state, that have school-based health centers as well. Um, and the luxury of that is that.
Luxury.
Um, we go into it with a memorandum of understanding. It has outlined all of the legal language that everybody, both parties need to know. Um, and that's something that would be presented and signed off on and, and all of those things.
Later, you know, later.
Routine. It's just like a memorandum of understanding that the district has with the main um, dependence for tobacco dependence. Um, or mainly dental, you guys have the same kind of memorandum of understanding with them. Um, other entities like the Maine General Sports Medicine, same kind of thing. It's the same thing.
Yeah, you know, routine.
So, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
So why are we thinking about doing a school-based health center at Gardner High School? We talked a lot about these, but I'm just gonna go over them again. They're very important. Not everybody has a primary care provider. A lot of times, kids, some, and teachers, they rely on urgent care. And they have to wait until after school, or they have to wait to try and get a ride, and maybe they don't ever. So they don't go get that care they need. Um, athletes have not been able to get sports physicals. One of the things we do at Lawrence.
When they said that the kids are afraid to go to their parents, nobody ever brings up. And so maybe it would be a good idea to encourage the child to go back to their parent and tell them what they've been doing.
And those days, we are busting up the seams, trying to get like twenties.
Is that too much to ask? You encourage them to do that? Why, of course it is. Cause that's not what your intent is.
Immunizations, that's been a huge one. Teachers, trainers, and coaches sometimes have questions about fevers or possible injuries. We deal with that a lot. Um, you know, we had a kiddo come in last week, um, really wanted, not last week, this was like a few weeks ago. Really wanted to play in a really important game.
She says that one more time.
And didn't have, there was some concern about the student playing, didn't have anybody to give the student clearance to play. We provided that. Called mom and dad. We said, this is what's going on. Do you want us to see your kiddo?
Kiddo.
Um, do you want us to try to see what we can figure out? Kiddo was able to get clearance, the sprain had healed, they were good to go. But otherwise, they would have just been sitting there, not been able to play in the game. Um, parents and guardians will be consulted with care.
She's a grifter.
Sometimes we may call parents beforehand and um, say, hey, you know, your, your kiddo came in, they're complaining of a sore throat. Um, are you okay if we look at your child? Um, sometimes we get the verbal consent first and we send the paperwork home and we track that and make sure that it comes back. Um, we've done that a lot. A lot of times too, once we've established relationships with parents and kids. A lot of these parents, and I know this sounds very sad, but they don't care to know. They don't wanna know. They're good, they sign the paperwork, do what they need to do. Um, but then you have other parents who wanna be super involved. We have parents that actually come to the school and attend the appointment with the kid. That's totally fine. Um, I'm gonna kind of talk to you about a typical day. So I chose this day, I've been at the health center quite a bit lately. Um, and I chose this day because this day just happened. Um, and just to put it in perspective. So we started the morning with a dad and a stepmom coming in to sit with a student and um, the provider, because the provider kept getting sent down to the principal's office. There's been some distraction issues. We already know the child has been diagnosed with ADHD, um, but there's been some concerns with meds. So we were able to call mom and dad and say, hey, we have availability tomorrow before you go to work. Do you wanna stop by and have this conversation, or do you wanna join us virtually? They wanted to stop by. It's great. So our day started out with that. We also treated three cases of walking pneumonia. We thought somebody said that earlier. It's going around like crazy right now. Um, then the provider had uh, an appointment with a student who um, has diagnosed ADHD. Um, and meets with the provider quite frequently, um, because they are on medications, mom and dad are fully aware. Um, then after that appointment, that parent likes to just have a follow-up. So we always schedule a block time for the provider. She actually calls the mom during the mom's lunch break and they do a virtual conference. Um, and, and just follow up with, hey, this is how the appointment went today. This is what I suggest, you know, that sort of thing. Um, and then we ended up um, meeting with a teacher. We talked about that unknown sore in her mouth.
Yes, driving that wedge between the kids and the parents.
Um, and then um, we had the janitor come in, um, we are actually his PCP. And he came in with an, with an unknown rash, um, and we were able to treat that. It's very uncomfortable, but he didn't have to miss a shift.
Hope it's not gonorrhea.
Had a meeting that afternoon with the, um, they call it the LEAP program there, but it's an alternative education program. Um, and we have several um, patients that we collaborate with, with that program. So they had a meeting between the provider, um, and one of the LEAP teachers with, on a particular student because there were some concerns. Um, and then we did a DOT physical because they had just hired a new bus driver. There was an open route.
Yeah, you know, why shouldn't we be paying for fucking physicals for our bus drivers?
Um, so that the bus driver could start tomorrow.
Isn't that great?
We had a kid with strep throat who didn't see us originally for strep throat. But the school nurse let mom and dad know that, hey, they can come in and see us, even though they went to urgent care to get diagnosed for strep throat. But it wasn't getting any better. We were able to still get all of their information from the urgent care visit and treat them for a follow-up of strep throat. She had to prescribe some more antibiotics. Kid was on his way back to class, good to go. Um, we talked about those two kids getting suspended for vaping. Um, we were able to get them in one that night and one the next morning, um, so that they could get back to school, um, because that's their policy at school. So that was a typical.
Wait a minute, what happened?
Um, again, in that typical day, all of.
Vaping and then they're back in school the next day? What the hell happened? Wow, they're flying through this. I don't even know what the hell is going on.
To outside resources and such. So one of the big hot questions, so what financial responsibility does MSAD eleven versus Health Reach have? Honestly, um, MSAD eleven, they have a space already. They pay for electricity in that space. The janitorial services in that space, which is just the floors, the bathroom, and taking out the trash every day. They pay for internet access in that space. So there would be no additional expenses for MSAD eleven.
Hmm.
Um, the space renovation, the current space is actually a great space and doesn't work. Um, um, but that space renovation, the student advise, I mean, the community advisory committee has one grant through Maine General and they're working on, um, another one, I believe, or something else, but they have grant funds.
Why the hell should the principal have a frickin clinic down the hall?
Implications for the school and there's no ongoing additional costs of any kind for MSAD eleven. Um.
Bullshit.
For Health Reach. So we provide the employees. Um, we, uh, usually typically it's a provider, it's a medical assistant, myself, um, and an LCSW. So currently, right now at Lawrence, they just found us a space very close by to our health center where they want us to, want us to employ a full-time LCSW, um, and put them in that space so that, um, they can see kids. Because right now what we do is we bring kids down to the health center. We put them in an exam room with an iPad. And they virtually have an appointment with an LCSW of ours at one of our other sites, whether it's Richmond or Cheapskod or Lovejoy, wherever it is. So, um, that is gonna be just a better situation for them because it's gonna be more face-to-face time with an LCSW. It's great.
Get on it. I can't do everything.
Care of all the operational expenses, supplies, services, referral staff. So if we had to have one of our connectors come in, set up parents with services, or maybe a kiddo with services.
Kiddo.
Take care of that. Um, we bill commercial insurance, we bill Medicare, we bill main care.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
For that sliding fee, which is super important.
Super.
We offer it to everybody, whether they have commercial insurance or not, um, even teachers. Some teachers, they have anthem, blue cross, blue shield, just like every other teacher in this state, um, and some of them, they still qualify for sliding fee. Um, any other expenses related, related to maintaining the school-based health center, we take care of all that. All the equipment. Everything that goes along with that.
You don't have to worry about anything.
And we also provide the financial stability to continue services. So this isn't just a short-term plan. It's a long-term plan.
I'll make a transcript of it and I'll have Rock County.
With kids and staff, it's super important to keep them. Um, it still amazes me to this day that we've been at Lawrence, um, for four years and some people just didn't know we were there, you know? We engage in teacher orientations and um, parent, teacher nights and um,
Hmm.
Um, all of those things were very visible in the community. We go to the football games, set up a table.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it seems like every single time we do that, um, we still have people coming up to us, oh my gosh, this is fantastic. What do you mean? My kid can just come to you? And yes, anytime they need to see us, they can come see us. Well, this is great because my kid has been experiencing some knee pain and I can't get him into the doctor. He's on the football team. Are you guys able to see him this week?
Give me a break.
Send him by tomorrow.
No way. Come on.
Um.
It's a bullshit story. It never happened.
Convenience goes into that. So the next few slides, I'm not gonna go through them. Um, you guys are familiar with the MINES data. This is.
What?
Data that, um, every two years, the school, um, students.
Oh, no.
The survey and it compiles all of this data, um, just to show you the overall need, um, that this community. This is against Gardner data, but, um, in this community, how much the need is, it's, it's huge. Um, to be able to get access to these services. I think we heard a lot about this tonight. Um, there's great presentations or, um, talking points, um, from, I heard like.
You could just blow right through these, but we're gonna get a chance to stop them and freeze them and read them.
Those are the people we should be listening to, and the students, because they're the ones that spend all day with these kids. They know what they need to stay healthy.
Better than you.
Um, so I think it's really important to listen to them.
Listen to them.
Because they get it.
They get it, man.
We'll tell you, after spending as many days as I have recently at a school-based health center, sat down with a kid, the provider asked me to just go through a checklist with the child. And I sat down with this kid and her willingness to wanna get better just blew me away. Um, I called mom, called dad, I said kiddo is here to see us today, are you okay? Yeah, sure, no problem, kid sees us regularly. But it was time to update this checklist um of information, and I sat down with the kid and I and I said to her, I said, what's one thing, if you could change in the last thirty days, what would it be? And she said, not watching my mom die from an overdose. And I thought, was not expecting that. And I'm sure that the provider knows that, but it genuinely set me back, because this is a safe space for her. Um, during the day at school, she struggles staying in class and sometimes she's found hiding out in the bathroom. She has a lot of trauma that she's dealing with every single day. Um, but we worked very closely with the vice principal to go and find said student, bring her down with us if she's having a rough day. Talk to her, we fill in mom and dad, stepmom and dad. Um, and um, you know, she's back at class. Sometimes the provider actually walks her back to class, which is I guess my point is those connections, until you actually experience them with the kids that need them, um listen to them, because it's um, it's there, so. And that's the presentation.
You willing to entertain a lot of questions?
Question one. Oh, and I would like to say that our um CEO, Connie Coggins is also here. So I may refer to her for some of the answers to these questions, so just a heads up on that.
Uh, nobody works for nothing. How do you get funded?
So the, the bulk of our funding comes from um submitting claims for services rendered. So as Deandra mentioned, we build commercial insurances, Maine Care and Medicare. About, because we're a federally qualified health center, about sixteen percent of our revenue comes in the form of a grant from the federal government. The federally qualified health center program was started during the Johnson's War on Poverty way back in the sixties. And what the government did is they wanted to provide access to primary care for underserved populations. So that's a kind of populations you mostly see in urban areas or geographically underserved, which really speaks to us here in Maine. Um, so about sixteen percent of our funds come from, from that federal grant each year. We are a private nonprofit organization that participates in that program.
So the rest of the money though comes from?
Good night, Karen.
Insurance payments, patient payments, yes.
Maine CDC, do they fund you in any way?
Um, right now, we have um a small, we're subcontracted for a small grant to work on an um, an initiative um to improve care for Alzheimer's in primary care. So it's a two-year grant, but they don't provide any ongoing funding.
If I may, the um, if we decide to do this and after one year or two years, we say, you know, we don't wanna do it anymore. Is it just a walkway? That's all?
Yeah, I mean, there's a memorandum of understanding and um, there's nothing um
A memorandum of understanding.
The school did not want the services any longer than we would no longer provide them. You know, we would need some notice.
It's a memorandum of
Yeah, and we would need some notice, because recognize that we're employing some people here, if we were to do, to collaborate together. So we would want to, you know, have some notice to be able to
Together, doesn't that sound great?
Find accommodations for the employees that are working here in the school district.
I, I can play the one-if game, but I mean, I'm, I'm thinking about, you're funded by um government grants, what if they dry up? Can you make up the sixteen percent?
We have a very uh strong financial performance, we've had solid operating margins for the last sixteen years. We did have a rough spot around oh eight, oh nine, when the economy took that, that dip. But, you know, we, we would, you know, work to find um kind of alternative um funding mechanisms. But we have a very kind of stable financial profile.
You don't, you don't really get a lot of funding then from Maine itself, the state of Maine.
From the state of Maine? No.
No, we're getting trans from outside.
An allocation of twenty-three thousand dollars from the general fund.
God, we somebody would leave the room.
Tony and then Molly.
And I, I just had sort of maybe more of a general question, do we have other programs we've done, like the SRO program or the uh deputy program, where we have like a similar type of MOU or a contract situation?
Yes, once the board approves something like that, you know, um, so most recently, we switched from Gardner Police Department to Enid County, so once you made that decision, then yes, behind the scenes, we then work on an MOU um to solidify that, so that is absolutely in place.
It's kind of like a yes, and then that MOU gets
Yes, correct.
What are the, if, I can just do one more, um, components of the MOU that you have with Lawrence or other schools?
I mean, it's pretty standard, but yeah.
Yeah, it speaks to kind of our responsibility versus the responsibility of the school, so like some of the janitorial internet access, it kind of codifies that.
It's totally nuts, man.
To the fact that Health Reach is governed under HIPAA, where the school district and like the services, the school nurse is governed under FERPA, and there is a difference, so it kind of speaks to that a bit. Um, we have a kind of a boilerplate that we'd be happy to send along.
That we sent were bots. We had eight thousand emails we sent, they wrote them off as bots. Just internet troll trash.
Insurance liability, who's responsible if something happens, all of that is usually covered.
I had two questions, if, uh, so if a student goes to the nurse's office and they say, oh, you should probably go to the clinic, you contact the parent and they'd be seen, say, for a strep throat, or some, they have a fever, they need to be sent home. Do you send them home, or are they referred back to the school to be sent, like the school nurse to be sent home?
Yeah, so we are right next door to the school nurse, or like this. So um, if she realizes that it's something more than she can handle, like a Band-Aid or whatever it is in the moment in that kiddo.
Wasting time here, talking about this.
Not just sending them home is gonna do the trick, they may need like an antibiotic or something like that. Then she'll, she usually calls mom and dad and says, okay.
Talking about, should we have a school nurse at the school? That's what it sounds like.
Look at them, um, we'll make sure that parents say it's okay, because again, we go by HIPAA, right? So we wanna make sure we can talk to the school nurse, because they are a different entity. So we usually have a, a release of information on file to talk to the school in general. Um, and then we'll see the kid right then and there, it's like a warm handoff and um we file all the things like you would in your own doctor's office. Then if the provider felt like they needed antibiotic, we call it and we send it in, usually provider calls mom or dad right away. Says, hey, this is what I did, um. We can actually provide a space if mom and dad can't come to pick up the student from school. Um, we've done that several times, because we know transportation is an issue, but we don't want them back in class, because they are technically still contagious. Um, so we have a space that we put them in, um, and it's a monitored space by uh the school nurse and ourselves. Um, where we just watch the kid for the day until um mom or dad can get there, or till they can get on the bus. We give them a mask, like if it's strep or something, um, but yeah, so we coordinate all that with mom and dad.
Okay, and I just have one other question, if, if a student is sent home sick and they're not able to go back the next day, but you are the PCP, do they come and see you still at the school, if they have to have a follow-up visit at the school and then they're sent home again?
Yeah, we just did that yesterday, I did actually, um, like he walked to us, because he doesn't have any other resources.
See, people got to ask questions even before the vote. See? You with it?
It was just getting worse, so, yeah, I know.
This is, the public comment part is over, the people have gone home already.
I'd like to clear up some discrepancies, discrepancies first. Um, Becky, you stated that, that the health clinic came to, came to us, but you stated that we came to you. So I'd like to, what, what is that?
Oh yeah, we're catching all of it on camera, Richard.
Advisory Committee approached us about
They're ram-rotting it through.
The health center inside Lawrence High School, and we worked with them um to collaborate that effort, we started back April, April, um, and we've been meeting with them ever since, um. And I don't, I can't speak to, to what she was saying, but
Yeah, there was a motion to table it.
Group then went to the school board, if that makes sense.
Okay, have you already been in the facility to determine what space you would be using in Gardner Air High School?
Um, yeah, we went and toured um the, the high school, just to see what the options were, because when they first approached us, they wanted to make sure that it was even possible in the space that they had, which is the current nurse's office. Um, and yeah, so we did, we toured the space.
When was that?
We met several times.
Exactly, Jeff.
Over the summer.
They're hearing the dollar signs.
Yeah, well, it was before we engaged a little bit.
I gotta get a cha-ching sound, right?
Yeah.
Cha-ching.
Okay. Um, I'd like to speak to Ramsey's trips comment of um this fifteen thousand dollars that was given to the school's district in advance of even parents knowing that this was a, a possibility.
What was that?
To why that gift was given.
Fifteen thousand?
That was a grant we received from CGI Center for Tobacco Independence, that is through Maine Health. That's totally, it has nothing to do with this, that was something that was designed to help us bring tobacco treatment to the school, which we're now providing at school. That money came with that grant, with that work.
They're a hooah.
My next question has to do with, um, you stated that um that medications are filled by the parents, um, or you would go get those medications if the parents are requested. However, there is a pending lawsuit against your organization with Lawrence High School for medication Zoloft specifically being dispensed and sent home with, with students in plastic baggies. Please explain.
So, I don't know anything about that. And I've been since they opened about four years ago. Um, but if there were any specific relationships or information with a particular student or parent or teacher, whatever it is you're talking about, I wouldn't be able to share that information anyway, because that's a HIPAA violation. Um, but what I did say was that any prescriptions are sent to the pharmacy, just like a prescription that your doctor would prescribe you from your own primary care. Um, and parents or guardians, they'll go and pick those up. But maybe a parent or guardian says, hey, I can't get over there and I know someone so needs antibiotic, is there any way to get it? Sure, no problem, one of us will run over.
We're not talking about antibiotics.
Um, and we have the student come to us when the school day has ended. Um, and we
Wow, we're getting this all on the record, guys.
Um, and we log that the student took it, and that comes straight from the pharmacy and it never leaves the pharmacy bag. And that's only if the parents requested it.
And the last question I have at this moment, um, is who decides decision-making capacity for a minor child?
Um, a provider, so
A provider?
The medical clinician.
The medical clinician.
Through their interviews and their interactions.
Wow.
Who gives permission for that child to be interviewed in the first place as a minor child?
Whoa, the law, the state law, if the child sought one of those three services, substance use disorder, mental health or family planning, which then the provider would interview them. And if there was a course of treatment needed, they would decide whether they could do that based on the decision-making capacity during the interviews and the visits they had with the student.
You on tape, lady.
Are you aware of federal law?
This is fire.
States that um on school property, there are prohibitions from things like um invasive, we find the invasive procedures such as insertions. Um, exposure of body parts. And here it is, I'm sorry. Parent, parent, guardian consent shall be required for physical examinations if given by the school physician under the auspices of the school. It also says, under federal law, for the purpose of this policy, invasive physical examination means any medical examination that in, involves the exposure of private body parts or any act during such an examination that includes incision, insertion, or injection into the body, which does not include hearing, vision or scoliosis. And this, this is verbatim from federal law. Um, so this, how, how do you, how do you do that on school property when this is in violation of federal law?
I, we'd have to look at that, but just to remind you, we are not this record, the school physician of record. We are operating an organization and within a space within the school. I, I assume that the school has like
What does that mean?
A physician of record or a provider of record.
We do.
And I'm, I, I don't, I'm not familiar directly with what you're referencing, so I could take a look at it. But that's not what we are, if we are operating a school-based health center.
So you're operating a commercial, I understand you're a nonprofit, but you're actually operating a commercial facility within our school
Yes.
That you have actually scoped out prior to parents even knowing that this was happening. And our school policy actually prohibits commercial usage of our facility under our very own standards, I'm happy to read them if you'd like me to.
Oh, do it, read it.
Um, so please explain to me how you are able to operate
This lady brought fucking receipts, dude.
Commercial facility in a school district.
Oh, she's been talking to an attorney, bitch.
Many school-based health centers across the state and across the country. Our ability to operate within the school is at the pleasure and a vote of the school board.
Okay, and that's fine, the other thing I wanna say is that um, in your presentation, you said that teachers know the students the best, that is absolutely false.
Yes!
Parents know their students the best, and so to circumvent parental
Oh my god!
By someone else deciding whether their child has decision-making capacity by minimizing, oh, it's only five percent that are confidential, that is completely inappropriate.
Yeah.
Um, and I'm going to stop speaking and cede some time to my other board members.
Nice. Can I just make one response, and I know, um, remember with board policies, the board sets board policy and the board can make a determination if it wants to modify policy or make an exception to policy. So where it may say that there is no commercial entity, you have the right to override that and allow this type of entity into your building.
Oh my god!
Um, let's see, Sage and then Barry.
You're allowed, we're allowed to change rules, it's okay.
I would like to argue that a student knows the student best, because we are human beings, um. I'm not really sure where this infantilization of high school students came from. Um, I currently am applying to college right now, I'm eight days away from waiting for my Dartmouth decision. So we can make our own informed decisions. Um, that's not news, that shouldn't be news, um, so this is not elementary kids. This is not kids that don't even know their ABCs yet, this is kids that are in high school level courses
Don't care.
Have gone to the doctor before, unless they haven't been able to.
And science shows that at twenty
Can I finish speaking first?
Actually, Michelle, stop, please, allow others to speak.
Thank you, okay. So there's a reason why twenty-seven of these clinics have worked in the state of Maine. Okay, like, there's a reason, not one of them has been shut down. So I just, this is an incredibly useful resource for students coming from a student. Okay, it would be so easy to go in, get a sports physical and be able to practice the next day. Or go play a sport the next day, it's
Remember, because of convenience, look over here, look.
Okay, that's not actually gonna happen, they don't have surgeons in there with scalpels, that's not something that happens. So I just want us to be aware
What is she talking about?
We are in the best interest of students, and this is what is for the best interest of students coming from a student.
Well, we don't care, it's the parents that make the fucking decisions, they pay the taxes, not the fucking students. God, this lady's insufferable.
Barry?
Oh, first I'd like to say that, but um, your parents, your parents?
Don't say that, Barry.
What was that?
Parents?
We're gonna recess for just a minute, Terry, so we can get ourselves together.
What?
Abort standard, Barry. I know, Jeff, you're gonna correct me in a minute and tell me I should be ashamed, but I'm gonna say right now, we treat each other with respect.
Oh, here we go.
Condescending and disrespectful. So there was already a president sent. I didn't see you say that when she was going, that was, that was condescending and disrespectful.
It was.
What Sage did?
Yes, absolutely.
No, no conversation. There is no, we are in a recess right now, take five minutes.
Oh my god, guys.
Five minutes.
Oh my god! This blew up, I wish Kyanga would have left, alright, we lost sound. Alright, so what the hell happened if you're just joining us, holy shit, look at this black guy, man, he's about to fucking have an embolism over here. So am I, oh my god! That lady sitting next to him was doing great and then, and then, you know, that lady is up there, I I was making fun of it, man. And she's like. I was, I, cuz it was, it was lame, it was condescending, it was bullshit. And then when he tries to point that out, they're like, what, what, what? Oh, man, guys, oh, wow! Oh, bitch. This is history you're watching right now, you see this? This is, this is fire, dude, this is fire, fire, this is triple fire, holy shit, man, fire cubed. We, did, Richard, you know how long it's gonna take to cut these shorts up, we gotta get all over this, man, we gotta cut this shit out of this. And everybody needs to post this shit, and I mean, everybody needs to do a reaction video ne- to it. We need to flood the zone, we need to find out names and 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 information. I got all the email addresses to these people, we gotta keep up the pressure on email, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta get together, we gotta brainstorm. Huh? Oh, whoa, buddy. Man, this is intense as hell, man, they're getting down. In the school district, oh my lord, lord almighty. I have never seen anything like this in my entire life, guys, I haven't, I haven't streamed anything this exciting and ever, yet. And bar none, and I'm talking about the fight and I'm talking about the election even. I was plum war out after thirteen and a half hours of streaming, right? But this is nuts, man, this is crazy. Yeah, man, it's up and huge, you got that right, Richard. We gotta get together, talk about what it is your vision is for this damn thing. Maybe we turn it into a mini documentary or something, right? We gotta do something, man, we gotta do something. To counteract this narrative, we need to put together like the things they're not saying, they're not telling us about. They're only giving us selective information, huh? I don't know how much longer it's gonna go. Wow, man, wow, they had, they had to shut this thing down because it got too out of hand, are you kidding me? That's crazy. Yeah, they're weak, yes, they are weak, Alvin, I can smell it. Yeah, they they called us all bots, Richard, that's what they said, man, that's all we were. We flooded them with eight thousand mails, they couldn't even read. Well, it's to their, it's to their uh mistake if they didn't read mine. Which said that I was gonna livestream this and cover this and I was gonna make them famous, yes, I did, guess they didn't read that one, huh? God, I hate these people. Seriously, man. Alright, here we go, let's rock on. Now that everybody's calmed down again. Oh, look, it's the, look at the, look at the two cameras now.
And without raising our voices and without accusations.
And then everybody else on the left camera.
Question, and. Joanne, you have a question? We have still two thirds of an agenda to get through, we have to vote to go past nine thirty, we are forty five minutes from there. So after Barry's question and after Joanne's question, we're gonna move the question, and that's, that's what we're gonna do, so, Barry?
First of all, what is your name, I can't, I can't read it from over here.
Sage.
Sage, I apologize, my comment was out of line, the whole, it was cute thing, I didn't need to say that, so I'm gonna find a more amicable way now to make my point. Parents work hard, we sacrifice our time and our lives and our blood and our sweat to make sure that our children are supported. As a parent, I am insulted to sit here and hear people speak as though. A high school person, child, I'm sorry, to use the word somewhere I can think of at the moment, a high school student. Is able to make responsible decisions without the aid of their parents. Twice tonight, their parents have been made to look like we are miniscule in the lives of our children. Our speaker earlier said, those are the people that you should be listening to, what I heard was, damn what the parents say.
The board knows better.
Another way that it could have been expressed, my two questions. Number one, I understand you're not a for-profit organization. However, the pharmaceutical companies and the other medical industries.
Oh, there's plenty of people making money.
Medicines, vaccines, IUDs, contraceptives, et cetera, et cetera, are.
Yep.
Is there any incentive that you receive from these companies? To disperse their products? Okay, so they they give you all this stuff for free?
We purchase it. If we, if we have to have a medication in one of our offices or if we, you know. Have, we purchase the IUD that. You know, we purchase medical supplies from these organizations. Um, we actually have a policy that doesn't permit what they call pharmaceutical detailing, which is when pharmaceutical reps come to your office. And they wanna meet with you and offer you, you know, lunch and gifts to use their products. We actually have a policy that prohibits that in our offices. Because we don't want to be, our, our clinicians don't want to be unduly influenced by that type of activity.
So that is awesome to hear, thank you for that information. Secondly, uh you made mention earlier about a boilerplate, I suppose this is some kind of docket of information or something that could be provided?
Yes.
That's something that we could be provided before we go forward with a vote.
We could provide that at any time you desire, our attorneys, we use the law firm Kozak and Geyer in Augusta. Um, created that agreement, it's, it's kind of very boilerplate, I mean, by boilerplate, we used that same agreement at Lawrence High School. And their counsel and their administration reviewed it, so we'd be happy to provide that to you.
Okay, so then parents and the board have not seen this information. Thus, I motion again that we table this situation until we're able to see this boilerplate document or documents that she's speaking, these agreements. In order for us to make irresponsible vote.
I second.
See, uh, just to answer that, the agreement um is is much just very similar to all the agreements. That your board does with other entities, like we talked about the the sports medicine folks or um Center for. Tobacco independence, same thing, it's, it's very, very similar, like, you know, it's just, it's more of a standard language type of thing.
That, that's fine, but so was a mortgage agreement, right, they're, they're pretty standard, but a person's gonna wanna read that agreement before they sign it.
Yeah, I just want that.
Signing over the healthcare of our children, which is our most valuable asset. I think that it's only responsible that we see something tangible in print that parents can review. Members of the district can view and the school board can review before we put forth a vote. I'm not asking to curb the health, I'm not saying tobacco, so far from that, that's, that's all pretty good, I. I've been influenced it, but. I would like to see something tangible and fine print.
Yep.
Cuz the devil's always in the details, that's the only thing.
Devil's in the details.
So there's a motion and a second.
There was another comment earlier.
I know you just said that um only him and her could speak, but I had a couple of questions.
I didn't see your hand and I'm so sorry.
Okay, yeah, I wanted to add some questions that the public was talking about too.
Okay.
That's, that's okay.
Well, we now have a motion on the board.
And we have to move on to motion first.
So we have a motion and a second, thank you, Linda. Um, does the board um wish to table this? Till we have all the information.
You can ask if there are any comments first regarding the motion, if any people have a right to ask a question regarding that. And then we can.
Then we can move it.
It's, what is common practice, is it typically we approve? For example, we would approve having a clinic and then you would look at a contract?
Yes, that is common practice.
No, it's not.
Say, we are supportive in concept.
Somebody said that's not right.
The, there is interest in moving forward, then the next step is to work on a policy, work on a contract. Brought back to the board, absolutely, um but that's common, that's just what.
No, it's not common.
What would then be brought back to the board?
If the board then wanted to have a draft of the MOU um and policy. If there is a policy, which would go to policy committee, but that's usually done after. Um, the board gives us kind of a go-ahead um to move forward with an initiative. We don't usually work, spend time developing an MOU, developing a policy. Until we know that there's some level of support at the board level, so.
Michelle.
Our board guidelines state, the MSAD eleven school board recognizes that the primary purpose for use of its facilities. Is to deliver its education programs, not healthcare. The school board also recognizes the capital investment the community has made in its school buildings and facilities.
Point of order, I know the policies, thank you, I don't need them read to me.
Um, I, it is my time to speak.
I, I called the point of order, so actually, it's up to the chair now. We all know the policy.
Do they all know the policy?
They don't make decisions.
They're not the decision makers.
Okay.
And our policies are all online.
So, um.
So maybe we just call. So, um, we just wanted to go to the board, do you have a question about this?
No, just about the.
Okay, motion, alright.
Right.
So, um, let's call question. Make your motion again.
I motion to table this until a later date when we can have more information in print. That could also be R B B replied.
Table.
You have a motion and a, and a second?
Unbelievable.
All those in favor of tabling it until we have an MOU?
Oh my god!
To waiting in time.
They're gonna ram it through, guys, here we go, we got it on TV.
Okay, so that will be just the reverse of before, so that's four thousand five hundred and eight. To seven thousand nine hundred and fifty five. And Kira, I will switch your vote to, I know. Alright, so now, um. So to be clear, that didn't pass.
That did not pass.
Thank you, Kira now can speak, yeah.
Okay, I just have a few questions, some of my own, some from the public, um, someone was talking about um. Like negative drug interactions that could happen and that have happened to other clinics. Has it happened at your guys' clinic and like, do you have the same sort of like information base that. Um, students' primary care places like what they would have, even though, even if you aren't their primary care doctor?
Well, usually the prescription is filled at the pharmacy of the the parent's choice, so the pharmacy.
Would you mind answering from the podium, just so you're loudly heard and understood?
Nope, it failed.
So usually, uh of course, we collect a medication history from the patient, but the, the, the. Prescription is usually filled at the pharmacy of choice.
Oh, they did this.
Pharmacy actually also helps with that by running drug interactions and identifying that. It'd be the same as if you went into urgent care, they don't necessarily have full access to your primary care records. And so there are some safeguards against um drug interaction. It, I don't believe it's ever happened at our school-based health center, but to say it's never happened within any of our health centers. There's always that possibility depending upon, um, you know, what, what information we have from the patient.
People are so trusting.
And then I have, um, have there, have you guys had any issues or hiccups at any of your school-based health centers? Um, that had like caused any issues?
No, David, they're not tabling it.
We certainly have.
They voted against tabling it.
It was our very first school-based health center, so there's a lot to learn about how you kind of work within a school. And how you interact with school personnel, but we've worked through all of those things and. You know, we have a very successful relationship today, um Lawrence is actually um building a, a new elementary school. And they're creating the space for a school-based health center to serve their elementary students. To me, that's kind of an endorsement of the value they place on having a school-based health center in their high school.
Oh, again, um, what it, what exact like reproductive health services will be um offered there? Cuz I know some people have like questions about like if um, like which types of like contraceptives or um, like how, how far that goes.
It's, you know, reproductive health services could be treatment for STU needs. It could be the provision of birth control to prevent unwanted pregnancy. You know, we're a primary care office, so we're not preferring any surgical procedure. If, if, if the question is about abortion or something like that.
Uh, I know there's, I know people were wondering, can abortion medication, just to make that clear, can a medic, like a medication abortion be provided?
It might be able to, I'd have to look at, ask our clinician, but anything that could be provided in a primary care office. Is, is kind of replicative of the services we provide in the school.
Okay, and then, um, what's the student advisory committee, could you speak more about that?
I would let Deanna speak to that cuz she's been part of that.
Yeah, so we have, every Friday, um, we have a student advisory committee that comes to us. And meets with us for forty five minutes, um, and, uh, well, twenty to forty five, a long story, depends if it's a double period or not. Um, and they do health education with us, they also bring concerns from students. Um, in terms of, you know, maybe some. Um, well, actually, someone had a concern on how to treat yourself if you got walking pneumonia because it's going around so much. And so the provider did some education on what walking pneumonia is, um, and how bad it can get. For signs and symptoms, um, so that was of the discussion. Um, so they bring concerns to us and they also kind of are like a good liaison between um with staff as well. Um, you know, talking about any concerns that they may have, um, from a healthcare perspective with things that they see in students, that sort of stuff. And then we also do activities with them, so, um, whether it's like um tobacco. Um, awareness type activities, because maybe that's the focus for the month. Um, they'll also do like posters and stuff like that for the school, um, they do presentations, that sort of thing, so. It's just a group that helps that bridge that gap from what's happening and what we don't know what's happening. And what they wanna know and all the education they wanna get, so.
And then all, this one's a quick one, but how late is the center usually open on, like when you're in the school?
So, um, we typically see patients until three o'clock, um, but we have a twenty-four hour on-call service. That kicks in right after that, um, so, which goes, we have a provider that's always on-call. Um, that takes those questions and nerves, so.
That's all I have, thank you.
So that, to address that a little bit, so there was a question about during the summertime, so if our clinician were off. We have, we have a, uh, we have a series of health centers, we have other clinicians that would cover, just like when your primary care clinician's away in your office. One of their colleagues may cover, if you have a health concern while they're not there, we have a system to cover that as well. So a student wouldn't let, be left without refills or, or care during the summertime.
And this past summer was our first summer where we actually were there in the, um, a good chunk of days in the summer. Which ended up working out fantastically and I, I see that happening more this summer. Um, because we were kind of busting at the seams, the handful of days that we. And I, I see that happening more this summer, um, because we were kind of busting at the seams, the handful of days that we were there, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Joanne? Just one more question, uh, well, you have been very clear that you are actively looking for parental or guardian involvement on everything. And basically, those people that are confidential under HIPAA is because there really isn't anybody that is interested or available to interact as the grown-up, um, of the student. Am I understanding that? Because that's what I heard from you, as opposed to, we don't pay attention to the parents.
Yeah, um, I'll give you an example, we have a seventeen-year-old who, um, doesn't have main care, doesn't have anything, nothing, doesn't have a guardian, really, he couch surf it, surfs, um, with his friends and, it's part of the alternative learning program, so they try to keep him in school as much as possible. But he just doesn't have anyone, he's not fully emancipated, um, but he can, because of the, the law and how it's designed, he can actually speak for himself and his healthcare, um, but we keep him confidential because he has no other means to, to do anything with, there's no one for us to tell, there's no, and he's still seventeen.
And the other thing with, with HIPAA too, is if a, a child comes in with a rash and it turns out to be an STD, it's very possible that the parents don't even know that their child is sexually active or doesn't understand the way it could be transmitted, that, you know, some people don't think certain kinds of sex is sex. Um, but you are responsible to make sure that you can have a web of contacts for the CDC to find out who else might also be infected as well and to treat the student, correct?
Yes, um, that's where that whole, I trust you to call my mom or dad, I don't wanna call my mom or dad, usually comes into play. Um, and the provider will reach out to mom and dad and have those conversations and go through all of the things that you just talked about.
I mean, yeah. Yeah, I would like to put forth a motion to explore the approval to host a health center, which means we can look at the information we're seeking for the MOU, which will come back to the board and then go through the policy committee.
Second.
Alright.
Now, please explain that.
The, um, yes, explain my motion? We're exploring the contract or the MOU, we're going to engage like we do with all of our other business partners to see if we approve a health center for next year at our school.
So we're moving forward, basically, yeah.
You're moving for a vogue.
Correct. To explore the approval, I'm not hearing that the motion is we approve.
Correct.
It's just we wanna take it to the next level.
Next level of having an MOU created, so that we know what.
Yep.
So that's behind the scenes where the superintendent meets with.
So, just to clarify, you are, you are not calling for a vote for the automatic approval and implementation of the health center. You are calling for a vote for more information so that we can move forward without an automatic approval.
I agree, yes.
Yes.
Okay, so that's what we did earlier, so. Okay.
The difference that I'm hearing, and clarify if I'm wrong, I am hearing that you are exploring approval, meaning you're kind of giving a general sense that you support the idea and now you wanna take it to the next step. That's what I hear.
That's correct, because I feel like we can't enter into a business contract with a partner without giving them an assurance.
Yep.
Just like we would want from them, so. Agreed.
So it's actually different than what we just said. So you are, you are saying, you're, you're saying that you want to enter into a partnership with them. So you're asking us to vote to bring them in, you're not asking, you're not asking us to vote for more information?
Hey, they're not gonna, they don't have to give us more information if we're just gonna flake out and not really partner with them. That's like any business, like why would they, it's like a good faith?
Well, as a sales executive for twenty years, I would offer contracts for my clients to look over and to sign. So as a business, as a commercial healthcare business, giving us the MOA to evaluate and then decide whether we wanna enter in is good practice, not for us to say, we're seeking approval, so then we're gonna get the contract after. There's a very, there's a very strong distinction here.
I think Molly has her hand up.
I voted against a tabling of the effort because I didn't think that we would result in more information or have an MOU to review. I would support this motion because I would like to get more information and have further discussions so that we can vote on this when we have more information.
Can we take the approval part out of it so that we are simply getting more information? We are not entering into a verbal contract that we are seeking approval. We are, we are saying the same thing, we all want more information, we all want the opportunity to evaluate it, but the difference is that I don't want to say, I want to approve this.
Yes.
Can you read the motion, please?
So the motion as I have written so far is to explore approval, um, to seek a school-based health clinic. Um, and within that, to look at a draft MOU and possible policy in order to decide whether to move forward.
Correct, that's correct.
So we have a motion?
Yeah, we have.
Tony seconded it.
Yeah, we have it.
So, I just need a vote.
Any more questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? Just abstaining?
Okay. So that, I know that we have eight in favor, so that passes, right?
Yep.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you all for coming and for being part of this.
I just played that up.
Yeah.
So, moving along, we're at recognitions and celebrations, and there are none correspondence as written.
Video reports. Um, I'm ready. Meeting for CACC Curriculum Committee.
I'm ready.
You go, girl.
Okay, I've been ready, so we had a meeting on November twelfth, which was livestreamed on msadeleven.org. We had a couple of topics we discussed, the first being a consideration to approve a recommendation for a shift in prerequisites for AP US History, currently there's only a US History Honors Program, this would be a motion to approve that and it, this is.
Oh, my god. Yeah, they, they, um, they vote, voted basically to sort of halfway in between kind of what they were gonna do, they're approved and move forward to look at it, to generate a MOU, a moo, boo. And then at which time, then they'll ram it through, cause I don't, you know, I don't know, what, what is an MOU anyway? I have no idea. Yeah, it is sort of a win, plus they're really, 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 really on the record on a lot of things. This is gonna take a bunch of people, we gotta, phew. Like, I'm not, I'm too tired to even think about beginning to look at this stuff, but man, we, we caught a lot of stuff, man. Oh, my god, no, okay, the memo of understanding, right, okay. Otherwise normally known as a contract, no? I don't know. Yeah, I'll have to look that up, so. Alright, guys. That was crazy. Really glad we caught that, and I'm really glad you were here to help us. And here's some more. Go get some rest, pray. We'll decide what to do tomorrow. And then we'll press in, right? Yeah, we're gonna go enter into an agreement to no more. See, I'm gonna run this through a transcription service. See what I can pick up. That's harder to pick up when you're listening. Yep. David wants more livestream. Well, thanks, guys, we really did enjoy it. Um, yeah, everybody sleep well. Yep, 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 yep. Okay, man, absolutely. Well, I'm, I'm glad everybody enjoyed it. My name is Tim, I'm a shoe slinger, I'm glad I made it through this, I took sleepy pills about forty minutes ago, man, so I'm, I'm faded, right, out already, so. Uh, I gotta, I gotta do a moo, though, I mean, I'm just, I'm just that anal, where's the moo? Can't find my moo. Looking for it. Don't cry.